No, don't keep while we're telling us. Since you gotta be quiet.
Six o'clock. Call me the order. Um adopt the agenda, motion.
Motion this year.
All in favor, Gary. That's not me, I know that. Ready? Okay, uh we have two public, our two delegations state. We have ACO with their streetlight and electronic metering program presentation. Uh that presentation is a presentation to council. We're not going to be feeling any questions from the public during that presentation. And the second presentation is a standard professional accountants with our twenty twenty two financial statement presentation. Peter Stone will be delivering that, so delegation, ACO, you're up.
Right here. We can't, yeah, thanks. Uh yeah, just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to uh share some information about the AMI metering program that'll be coming to the community of Hannah, Hannah and surrounding communities in the area. Uh so this year, we've got a program underway, uh advanced metering infrastructure, AMI for short. Uh and we'll just go to the next slide. So a bit of an overview, uh these meters, they're digital meters that measure how much electricity is being used and when it's being used. Uh there is two-way communication from the meter to the uh to the collection so that we can see what's happening with the uh power grid and be able to report consumption in real time. Uh the AMI meters have been implemented all over North America and in some parts of Europe as well. Just to share a little bit of information, in Canada, uh Fortis, Atcore, ACO, Equus, those are all Alberta utilities and are in the process of uh deploying this new technology in the systems. Hydro Quebec has also uh taken this route and a few examples from other uh utilities across the world. So some benefits of the AMI meters, uh it allows for some faster outage detection, uh response and restoration. Uh can help reduce the costs uh due to automatic meter reads and reduced site visits, so not needing people to go to site to to take a look at the meter and read it. Uh it can give some timelier meter reads which ensures the usage calculations on the bills are more accurate. Um rather than delay in actually getting to site and reading it or estimating readings. Uh there are remote connect and disconnect capabilities, so if customers uh have a need need for a temporary disconnect, there's a availability there to actually dial into that meter and and disconnect for the customer.
Do you want questions now?
Go ahead.
And is that disconnection and connection due to say like a fire or?
I could be, or if they're doing upgrades uh and need a request, lots of times with uh but the panel upgrade, we will need to actually disconnect uh out at the service, but uh there are times where you know we can do a a remote disconnect for a customer request, yeah. Um so the radio frequencies, so the meters and uh there's three components really. Uh the meters use a radio frequency to communicate the information uh from the site. Uh the RF emissions are minimal and aligned with Health Canada standards and uh studies show that there are no health risks. No customer data, so your name, your address, your phone number, any personal information like that, nothing like that's collected or sent back and forth. Um. This just shows kind of where the meters uh fall in relation to other devices that are commonly used uh out in everyday life. Uh the meters, the gateways, the routers, they all fall in that same kind of bandwidth and ranges like your wifi router in your house or your mobile phone in your pocket. Uh like I said, there's three, three devices that go into the new technology. Uh one is the physical meter on your property, another is a router, um the third is the gateway and you've likely seen some of the new routers and gateways start getting installed on uh streetlights or holes around town. Uh and the manufacturer that make this is Landis in here and they are a European company that are headquartered in Switzerland.
So those meters, would you say meters or routers? Or that are on the the top of the the labs?
Some of them have, will have routers and some will have modems.
And can you tell the difference between two?
Yeah, actually, we've got some uh, we've got some devices here that they can look at.
Bernie, are you gonna be there?
Yeah, I did say.
That's your router?
Okay.
And that's a gateway.
Okay, and so is that the big bulky thing on the top of the of the light stands or not, above the bulb itself?
Yeah, some of those will be uh installed on streetlights.
So right by the park of the Royal Bank?
Right by the church?
No, the the new light that was put in by Memorial Park.
Mm-hmm.
That one, I I don't know if if there's something similar to that there or.
Definitely like. Definitely like the full assault there.
Yeah.
Thank you. If we had concerns or people, let's talk about that one secretly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Uh the meter, so the meter itself reads the consumption and sends the data back, uh the monitors, it monitors the power quality and can actually also detect uh when there's outages before other customers may have had the chance to report the outage itself. Uh the routers are, they enhance the communication network by relaying information from the meter to the gateway device. Um and another term for the router would be a repeater. And then uh the router and meter communication methods, again, they both uh communicate on a nine hundred megahertz frequency band. And it's uh a similar band that can be found on some walkie talkies. The gateways, and there's a picture there that you can see with a gateway installed. Uh that takes the consumption data from the meters uh to the customer information billing system so that it can be assigned to the right uh service address and billed back to the customers.
So in the past, Peter, when you, like, I know with our water meters in town, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to close certain areas in town to pick up certain re-reads, is that correct? Is that with the similar system what you were using before?
Uh the the existing system is also an automated, but it sends a signal over the power line itself.
Okay.
Uh different frequency through the power line. Uh there's some devices that are installed out in the field in different spots uh for collecting the information that sends it back to the to the information system, so this, again, this isn't all that different from the existing system. Existing system uh really only has one-way communication and that's from the meter to the system, this will allow us to be able to you know, help better serve customers and give some information on their consumption. And it's just the technology is changing and and improving and then we're, you know, following along with some of the new technology that's coming out. Uh again, it's that same nine hundred megahertz frequency, you'll see some antennas, uh number one, the the bottom antenna, I guess, is a radio frequency antenna. Uh and that's what communicates between the different uh different components, and then the top two antennas, those are like a cellular phone basically built into the device, uses an LTE network, not five G, and it sends the uh data collected from the meters to the information uh to the billing system. Similar to like your mobile phone on the telephone or your bill network, whichever, whichever you use. Before, the plan is uh to have the community of Hannah done this year, and like I said, we're installing it in other areas in uh the Hannah service point, so we'll be open about from the smaller communities as well.
My only question had to do with the cost, obviously this gets passed down to the customer.
Right.
That's a lot, so every home is gonna have.
So this, yeah, this is a a capital improvement, right, and it's not, it's not going uh there won't be additional rate base, I guess, basically passed on to the customers. Actually, the hope is that we see some efficiencies and start to see some rates go down in the long run with the.
And this is not, you were talking about the this cost savings about employees, will there be um layoffs related to you?
No, mu- mu- a lot of the area that we already serve in this service point and across the province, we have the older technology, the AMI technology or AMR technology, sorry. And it is starting to be phased out, it's getting to be old technology not supported anymore. So this is just, you know, we need to say, continue, stay up with the times and and install the new technology.
Thank you, yeah.
So Nick, I I have a question um or comment, so I know some of the people who may be in the gallery tonight. Um there've been questions about the cameras um in streetlights, can you talk about, talk about that and, you know, provide any information to us and to people here that to confirm that they're, you know, you've got surveillance cameras?
Yeah, no, there's no, no cameras in any of the devices, there's no cameras in any streetlights. Um you know, there was that green uh a green photo I that Bernie had picked up, there is a lens on it and all that does is senses uh the light. I mean, light, and it's just a a switch to turn on the streetlights at night or turn them off when when there's adequate daylight. So, yeah, there's no, no video cameras on any of these devices.
There are some solar then, or some of them solar?
No, no, no. No, they're connected, like they're hardwired to the grid, just that photo I, it's just a controller and there's a switch in there that uh just detects the amount of amount of sunlight and closes the contact or opens the.
Okay, when you said that, I thought maybe it.
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's a point, it's a point.
Thank you.
Nick, I I thought your name is Nick, now I heard somebody call you a couple different names, but um are you, are you sure what to call you, I heard. I'm sorry, are you a linesman in town here then, or you're just doing the?
Senior manager for the Southeast Region.
Okay.
So I look after, our Southeast Region uh covers everywhere from Forestburg, Castor Concert, Stettler, Three Hills, Drumheller, Hannah, Wayne.
Okay.
So that's uh senior manager looking after that service area.
Thank you.
But you've been in this area, I, yeah, I've been in Drumheller for twenty-two years now, uh a lineman by trade, I was a PLT.
Yeah.
And you said you'll be done by when?
Uh.
Installing.
Well, the the end of the year for sure, and we're waiting on some uh the meters to arrive, supply chain, uh there's obviously been some issues with supply chain, but uh the goal is to have the community converted this year.
So do you know, Nick, approximately how many gateway devices would be in Hannah?
That's a good question that I don't know.
Okay, just curious whether there's gonna be five or fifty or five hundred, like.
Around twelve gateways. And routers, we're probably looking around twenty, thirty routers in different places throughout uh the town and surrounding communities so we can have this grid in order to talk back and forth.
Okay, no, that's, that's, I'm just trying to get a picture of how many we would expect to sit around town.
Good question.
And what did you, sorry, what did you say the timeline was gonna be to to finish up all of this?
By the end of this year is the goal, again, it depends on what we how our supply chain cooperates with us on uh receiving the meters, we have routers and gateways uh that we've started installing already to be ready to go once the meters are.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, well, do you have any other questions that come up afterwards, just uh shoot us a note, we'll get back with an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion from council to thank Representative ACO for the presentation on the town of Hannah, streetlights and actual electric electronic metering devices, that's a work bee. All in favors?
So can you leave things for us? Oh, really?
You have less on literature.
Yeah, that's, that's. Sure.
So Nick, did you guys wanna pack your stuff up, you wanna?
Yeah.
If that works for you, maybe take a per a minute break, because you guys can pack that up. Since you're not leaving as far as.
We didn't want to disrupt her.
Yeah, that's yours. It is not cold.
The county is always dry.
I guess, I always knew that you would at the end. You lose the map so bad.
So I think we're ready, when you are, Mr. Mayor.
Nick, so uh three point zero two is the standard charter of accountants and with our uh we're most.
Financial reviews.
So everybody should have a copy and there is up on the PowerPoint a copy of the financial statements. The ones on the uh on the PowerPoint are marked draft, the ones that council has are the finals. There hasn't been any change between the draft and the final, so it's effectively the same other than the watermark on there. So we'll just skip through the first couple of pages, which are the title page and the table of contents. And then we get to the third page, which is labeled page two at the bottom, this is the independent auditors report. It goes on for two pages, and I just want to pause there for a second to say that it was a clean audit, that we didn't have anything that we discovered that was uh, you know, a reportable issue, so, so that's a good thing. The next page is management's responsibility for financial reporting. So this is just management signing off on these because the financial statements actually belong to management, they're not ours, all we're doing is attaching the audit report to the outside of it, so. Then we get into the statement of financial position. So this is a snapshot of where the town was at December thirty first. And so at that point in time, there was five point one seven nine million dollars sitting in the bank account. And receivables of taxes, trade receivables and receivables from other sources of government. You can see those, those first two, the trade receivables and and uh taxes receivable are both down from previous years, so collection efforts are uh are working and and they're, the collections are better this year than they were last year at this time, so. So that's a good thing. Um and yeah. Then we get down to some inventory help, some land inventory help for resale, that's one point two million dollars there. And investments of two point one million for a total assets, financial assets of ten point nine or ten point nine million, yeah. I don't know why I wanted to say, yeah. Nineteen, but I, yeah. And then we have liabilities, so the liabilities are similar to last year. Um the the big item there is deferred revenue. So deferred revenue, we will get to it in note, note five in more detail, but basically deferred revenue is any revenues that have been received by the town and but having the corresponding expense hasn't, or the the timeframe or the corresponding expense hasn't happened yet. So most of that deferred, well, we'll get to it when we get to note five, but I just wanted to say that that's so, that's unearned revenue basically, so monies that have been received but haven't been earned yet. Um then we have employee obligations and long-term debt, those numbers are very similar to last year. Bringing us down to net financial assets of seven point seven million dollars. Then we have tangible capital assets, it's very similar to last year, about thirty thousand dollars, so there are some additions that went into that, and then the existing um assets got depreciated, so basically that those two things offset each other, and that's why the numbers are fairly similar to last year. A little bit of prepaid expense, that's the opposite of the deferred revenue, those are things that we paid for in twenty twenty-two, but they actually relate to twenty twenty-three. It's not a huge number there anyway, but, and then deposits on asset acquisitions, so again, this is things are money we've paid for, but we haven't yet got that asset, so. Then the next page, page six in the bottom corner is the statement of operations. So this is what everybody wants to see, the revenue and expenses. And uh and you can see at the top there that uh that the revenue numbers are very similar to last year, up by about twenty thousand. A little bit off of what was budgeted, but uh very comparable to the previous year. And then expenses, the same sort of thing, very comparable to the previous year. A little bit over budget, but uh but comparable to the previous year. And so we end up showing at the bottom an excess of revenue over expenses of fifty-seven thousand. More or less break even, given the numbers we're talking about, that's pretty, as close to break even as you can get. And uh the accumulated surplus at the end of the year is left at thirty-seven, so this is the retained earnings of the the town, so the accumulation of years and years worth of earnings that that have been left over or been retained. Then the next page is page seven. This takes that same revenue or net revenue number and then just uh um takes into consideration the tangible capital assets. So there's acquisitions of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand and then amortization of one point one. So, so then the the uh the increase in net assets is thirty, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Taking us to, from three forty, seven point four three three to seven point seven seven two. The next page is the statement of cash flows, so this basically shows us where the money came from and went to. So again, we start at the top with the net income for the year. And then uh we add back some non-cash items. And then there are some fluctuations in in balances of receivables and payables. The capital asset acquisition, we saw that number already, there is some purchase of investments of eight hundred and or three hundred and eighty-six thousand. And or some repayment of long-term debt for twenty-seven thousand, so the change in cash, it increased by two hundred and eighty-four, bringing us to the five point one seven nine that we saw on the, on the balance sheet. Or the statement of financial position. Then we have a detailed schedule of the tangible capital assets. So this is just breaking down those assets by land, land improvements, building, engineered structures, machinery and equipment and vehicles. And it's also showing us the original cost at the top minus the accumulated depreciation to get to the depreciated number that we saw before. Then there are a couple of schedule, couple more schedules on the next page, schedule two is a breakdown of the tax revenue and the requisitions that tie into the total municipal taxes of collected of two point, two point seven six eight million. Then we have government transfers at the bottom. So transfers for operations of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand and transfers for tangible capital property of four hundred and seventy for a total of one point three. Of four hundred and seventy for a total of one point three. And then the next page, we're page eleven now, everybody who's following along. This is the same expenses that we saw, but now we're breaking it down by expense category or by object. Instead of by department as we did on the original page. And then the uh schedule of a, of changes in accumulated surplus. So this is just showing us the breakdown of the equity between. The unrestricted surplus, which is sitting at the end of the year at five point four million. The honors or the restricted surplus is sitting at two point seven one. And the equity in the tangible capital assets is sitting at twenty-nine million for a total of thirty-seven. And then we have the schedule of segmented disclosure. So again, this is showing us, this is just another format of showing us the same numbers we've seen already. Now we're breaking it down by the different departments and the revenue and expense for both. Then we get into the notes to the financial statements. The first note being significant accounting policies. And it goes on for several pages. And I'm not gonna bore you by going through that. But you, I will say though, that the, the accounting policies haven't changed from previous years, so. Those are consistent from year to year. Then there's. Uh note two is a note on cash and it's just uh. Um highlighting a little that uh. That there's restricted funds. Of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand of that cash that we saw before. And then we have taxes in place of grants. Or taxes and grants in place of tax, tax receivable, so these are um. The, the taxes that we don't actually get for uh other government bodies in town. Basically, and then uh breakdown of the investments is note four. And this is the deferred revenue that we talked about before, so this note's quite a lengthy note. You can see the big number there is Alberta Municipal Sustained Initiative. So that's monies that the town has received but hasn't spent yet.
Scroll up, scroll down, or sorry.
Sorry. I'm going too fast, Emily.
So the two big ones there just are our MSI, as council's aware, we've been um hanging on to it for. Large project in our, was the federal gas tax fund, now the Canada Community Building Fund, uh again, we've just been uh. Uh reserving them for a big progress, so.
And given that interest rates are rising, why not have an rate account, right? So then the next page is uh or the next note is note six, employee benefits obligations, that's just breaking it down with me. Vacation payable vested sick leave and banked hours. And then long-term debt.
So just a, just a comment on that here, because there's sometimes a question.
Yeah.
So uh on the vested sick leave payable, um. Just so everybody's clear, if, if uh employee leaves the organization, uh they've not paid out any sick time. That they may have banked over the year and a half accumulated, so it just gets changed and taken off your book, so. So that a hundred and thirty-seven, seven fifty-four, um I know I did talk with Aiden about it, whether we. We need to show it or don't show it, because if someone does leave the organization, um they don't get, they don't receive any compensation, so it doesn't really. Need to be there or not, so.
Right. But if they, they were actually sick and took the time off, then they would, then it would um de- deplete that balance, so yeah. Yeah, and then the next note is long-term debt. So there's a capital lease obligation of two, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then a breakdown of the interest in total for that. There is. A note on contaminated, contaminated site liability.
So that's new this year here, just uh so council's aware, so as we've been doing some uh. Preliminary engineering on our downtown um redevelopment project, um we've taken some samples of uh road. Um road waste under the asphalt, and there is. Some significant contaminated soil underneath the, underneath second Ave in the, in the downtown core, so. Um we don't know what. To the full extent, obviously, it's uh, it's covered with asphalt, but I know I did mention to Aiden, so that's why we did put that uh note in the financial statements.
And basically, we've said there that we can reasonably estimate it at this time, so we haven't accounted for it in the financial statements at all.
But as the time goes on and we find out what the expenses are to address that. Then this will come in, it'll be reported in there.
Correct.
As well as an offsetting credit. Um like a, as far as showing that it's being paid or.
It, it will be set up as a liability and, and the corresponding expense.
Okay. Thank you.
The next note is the debt limits, so these are the uh. Municipal, municipal affairs limits on the amount of debt that you could carry. And you can see that's, the number is ten point six million. You're only using two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so there's ten point four million available. And then debt servicing, there's one point seven million available for servicing that debt. Then we have equity in tangible capital assets, so that's the total of tangible capital assets minus the accumulated depreciation. And minus that long-term debt to get us to twenty-nine million dollars. The accumulated surplus, again, this is. Showing us that in a little more detail, broken down by department. But the total is the same that we've already seen before of thirty-seven. There are some funds held by the town in trust for um for a few things, that's the next note, well. Showing that, those numbers haven't changed since last year or haven't changed significantly since last year.
The only, the only one that changes is the uh. Your educational versary, so as we pay out the scholarships, uh it will be reduced by that much. By the forty-five hundred less the interest that was accumulated, so, so it's, it's slowly going down.
There's a note on segmented disclosure. And budget data. Breakdown of salaries and benefits. That's uh required by municipal affairs, that's why that note is in there. Then we have a note on the local pension plan, the local authorities pension plan. And a commitment note, so this, this commitment note is just talking about any um, any leases or. Or that sort of thing that, that the town has, you can see there's not much there, six thousand dollars a year. Um well, I guess eleven thousand dollars total. So. That would be for, I don't, I'm guessing a photocopier or something like that.
It's for our mailing.
Okay.
Mailing machine.
Yeah. Um contingent liability note. This is. Required and basically saying that uh. That there weren't any uh, any contingent liabilities. Financial instrument note, budget amounts and the approval of the financial statements. So then council also has in their package a copy of our post-audit letter, just to. Let you know if there were any findings during the letter or during the, the course of our audit, which again, there weren't, so. But there is a copy of that letter in there and then. Of course, uh Kim has a copy of the. Financial information return that has to get submitted to municipal affairs. Any questions?
So what would you say are? The expenses to our income when we're in good standings or we?
Yes, so I, I mean, as I said before, you're more or less break even from a revenue and expense point of view, so. You're not collecting more taxes than you need to pay the expenses of the town, so.
And we can borrow ten million bucks.
Ish, that, that may turn things around, but. Well, again, you're just borrowing it, so it has to get paid back. That's another council's problem.
So Mr. Mayor, just uh, it is part of the business items when you have to approve the financial statements, but we do uh. We will, once they're uh approved by council, uh we do post our, the financial statements on our website, so they are available on the website and. We do advertise um. In, we'll advertise in ECA review and then using a few other methods that the. Financial statements are on our website and anyone doesn't want to, to receive that way, if they wanna come into the office, we can. Provide them with a printed copy of financial statements as well, so.
Yeah, and I can also provide you with an electronic copy without the draft or watermark, and then if you.
Yeah.
Then you can distribute them by email as well.
Yes, that would be perfect, Peter.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Other questions, Peter?
Uh with motion, thanks, Mr. Peter Stone, CPA, CA, for his presentation to the governor. The twenty twenty-two, on his own statement, also, Carol. On favor. Thank you.
Yeah.
Did everybody had a chance to review the events of the meeting?
Just, Mr. Mayor, if, if there was anybody here who wanted to speak.
Oh, for a public presentation, so.
Thank you, I don't think much of your time. Um and this is not about the new bylaws, I'm just questioning some of the existing bylaws and our. How they're enforced, um and it's become more important and apparent to me the last couple of years as my mobility. As I lose more my mobility, so this year I've not been able to walk around one block, cross one alleyway. Um. Uh safely get from one sidewalk to the other without aid assistance, uh. Sticks, whatever you want, because that, there isn't a block that's been cleared, it's not, not streetable. Um. And again, I think we talked, it was mentioned last time that um. Our average age is decreased, so we have a, we have a. Um a number of citizens that probably are facing along the same lines of struggles that I am. Um also, uh this may be petty, but. Uh RV parking, if you're not gonna allow it, don't allow it, there's one-on-seven, second avenue has been there all winter, so be there. Um unless there's a permit, if there's a permit, then should there be something else, I don't know. Um. Um there is a solar presentat- a presentation regarding PACE's proposal. And I would invite any of you to contact myself or Carol if you want to see it, because. There have been some pretty significant discrepancies found in the three different proposals, the one. Went through the mail, the one that you guys had and the Zoom meeting, so they're significant. And if anybody's interested in seeing that, um.
I think we are aware of that, I think we identified them as well.
Okay.
So it's not news to us.
Oh, good, yeah.
So I do believe, I, sorry, I, I do believe that uh we have that. Pace presentation, we have submitted it.
Yeah, we provided a link directly to their document.
Yeah.
And she has indicated that she updated our documents.
And I guess she would. She did also reply to me that she fixed uh land description, but there is like four or five major discrepancies, including landowners, so. Just uh if you're interested in hearing.
Hmm.
Um. The Hannah Farmer, Farmer's Market receiving a discount off of their rent. I understand that and understand there are other organizations that may need that, but the Hannah Farmer's Market here, the Ag Society is responsible for picking up anything that they can to pay. So they are covered. Um so it, it's confusing to me why you're giving out money to this organization who has promised backing, where some others might not. Um at, I just wanted again to mention a few things that I've learned and please feel free to fact-check me, because I'm not a professional. Um. So with ACO here in town, they own all of the equipment in town. So it doesn't matter who your retailer are, you're paying distribution, distribution fees and all those different charges. So just based on my, on what we get charged average a month, two hundred and forty bucks, um. Extra charges on our ACO bill. So I figured that out in over twelve months and then I used Dust Cam for twenty-one hundred homes. I understand that all of them are op- operating and have power. But that equals over six million dollars. And that's not our hospitals, our schools, our churches, our grocery stores, or is any of the businesses, any of that, that's just home. So I'm curious for the six point three million dollars, what we're getting for that. Um the meters, I believe the smart meters are already put in, at least that's what they were called when they put ours, like quite a while ago. Um. They're optional, you can't opt out of them, but that means, all of a sudden means somebody coming into your yard. And that will raise your costs of power, of the distribution purchase. Um the LED lights, they say there's no um surveillance, probably the lights have the ability to communicate and surveil on their own. So um you might just wanna. Check on that as well, um so I do believe there would be a few job losses. Um. Yeah, thank you, that's my head.
Thank you, any questions, Dylan? Very none, thanks a lot. Any others? No, I'm back, quick, dry. Uh minutes of the regular meeting of council, March fourteen, twenty twenty-three, we adopted this presented motion. Also, all in favor? Gary. Minutes of the information meeting, the council held March twenty ninth, we adopted, presented motion. Council, all in favor? Gary. Babels. Questions? Housewoman.
Um I had a couple of questions, just for information regarding uh zero zero one eight nine nine. Uh nineteen hundred and nineteen oh three, there were um three insurance. Draws, and I just was kind of confused, um I'm assuming that nineteen oh three is an annual.
So, yeah, so nineteen oh three is uh are basically our property and. Uh comprehensive liability insurance, so it's an annual. It's an annual amount and it, it shows up funny in our uh statement of revenue expenditure still, because we haven't. Allocated it, so it's all underwritten and, but it'll have to be allocated to the arena, the pool, the different facilities, so. But that's our annual, what you would consider, property and comprehensive liability insurance. The two other ones, the one eight nine nine is RAM, that's one of our benefit providers.
Okay.
So that's uh our premiums for uh benefits and we also, we have two benefit providers. So one is RAM and one is MSC, so MSC is more the short-term, long-term and life insurance, so. Those are the premiums for them as well, so.
And the only reason they're separate is because one's a longer term and one is a shorter term.
Well, they're probably two different, no? Two different providers.
For different purposes.
For different purposes, and then the MSC insurance is the property and comprehensible annual one-time, so.
Um and also there was um four two five six five, four two. Five seven seven, and those are the AED life. So I'm assuming the first one, um four two five six five is just sort of an update, do they get, um, do they have to be? Um, do they have to be updated every year, or?
Three years.
Every three years, and then the other one is just additional ones that are required for.
So there was.
The more medical health assist.
There's a few. There, and and I'll let the fire chief speak to them, because he was uh, responsible for the purchases, so.
We, to give you a little history, the town bought about five or six new ones here a couple of years ago for the facility, so they're all the same. And at that time, FIRE took over one of the old ones.
Okay.
We already had three, we keep three trucks that are equipped with trauma bags and AEDs. Two of them ended up with a recall.
Oh.
And then they told us that you're probably good to use them until the batteries go, when the batteries went, we sent serial numbers in and they said unfixable, throw them away. Okay, so now we still have two going, one started flashing low battery, and we were informed that that model's outdated and you can no longer buy the batteries.
Oh.
So I had four AEDs come January, and we were down to one AED shortly before we ordered this. We were able to take a trade-in program with this company. So we went with a very similar AEDs to what we were already using, to two of them, and purchased just the three, we don't need four, we had four as a surplus because of the town buying the other ones. We didn't go the same as the rest of the town, we stayed more with what emergency services use in special areas, just purchased some. A month before us, so we went with the same ones, tried to keep some consistency within the departments.
And you interchange them, like do you?
No.
Okay.
Oh, so we have three brand-new ones on three fire trucks.
And is, is that sort of a new thing now that you guys are doing more and more, um?
We've had it for a long time.
Okay.
Original two AEDs we purchased for the town of Hannah, I got a Star's Grant.
Okay.
Way back when, and we put one in the arena to be moved between the arena and pool, and one on a fire truck. Those were the first two we had in the community that I'm aware of, and then we've just slowly expanded from there.
And there is one in Centennial.
No, there's, yeah.
Yeah, most of our facilities, if I'm correct, have.
Um, community center and.
Yeah, I think that was done by the.
No, that Centennial Place was the one they donated money for, okay, sorry, yeah.
The pads that you noted on the other one, they typically only good for two to three years.
Okay.
They have expiry dates on them. We've questioned for a long time, just because it has a date, but it's in a sealed bag, but. Like anything, fire or medical, if you peel it off and go to put it on a chest and it doesn't stick. And you've found that you had an outdated pad, and that's what caused you a delay, somebody's gonna get sued, so we're throwing a lot of good pads. Away every.
Potentially good pads.
But we throw, yeah, we throw a lot of unused pads away every year because of this, so. Yeah, and I know they were backordered for quite a bit, the town ones that they were having trouble getting them. This supply chain's been an issue on.
Okay.
We try to use them for trading.
Yeah, well.
Stick them on anybody that wants to be shaved or have a stock.
For the, is it?
Like if they're.
School training. Drink, a drunk driving thing that you guys did a number of years ago?
We had the big EMS ones on them then.
Okay.
EMS use what's called LifePak, so it's got a lot of different monitors built into one, whereas we're more the single monitor for action, single monitor for AED.
Okay.
We're more the old school.
Okay, thank you very much for the information.
And this wasn't on plan purpose, we didn't see this coming up a bunch of time.
Well, that's okay, I just looking for information on that and stuff too, so yeah, if it's to do with fire and health, why not, like, not why not, I'm sorry, but. It, like you said, better safe than sorry, right?
Our good budget's been getting kicked by a few unplanned things already.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to, I figured this would be a question, but uh, um. There is zero four two five eight two, so, Drager, so this again, this was again, uh. Not in our budget, but uh, the, and 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 Fire Chief will explain uh, more about it when uh, he does his presentation later on. But basically, it was an in and out, so the association provided us with the two hundred, two hundred, wow, less the GST to two hundred and twenty.
Two twenty.
Two twenty, and um, I believe this is fifty percent.
Yeah, it was the down payment, our props were four hundred and forty thousand for the next round, so that was our fifty percent down payment. And I'll cover the rest of my report.
Okay.
Any more questions? Also accepts, general account checks, four two five six four two four two five nine oh. And direct the five zero zero one eight nine five two zero zero one nine seven five confirmation. Motion, Council, all in favor? Harry. Revenue expense.
I have one particular question, Mr. Mayor, on that, just, just out of curiosity, I seen on there, there's uh, fox like revenue of fifty-two hundred. And then fox like revenue, or rental revenue of seventy-four thousand, just curious, the fox like revenue. Fifty-two hundred, is that?
So, I'm just looking. Fox like rental, the fifty-two hundred is um. Or. Um, just trying to remember which one that fifty-two hundred is, the seventy-five, the seventy-five seven, the fifty, sorry, now I don't read American. Fifty-two hundred is where we code wood sales.
Oh, I wonder if that was.
Sales and um, uh, showers, shower, shower dollars, shower money. So that's the fifty-two hundred, the seventy-five seven is the actual campground rentals.
Thank you for that, I wondered, yeah, we make pretty good money then, I guess, off the showers and a little bit of wood that we sell up there in the season, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, folks, girl.
Yeah, the question now I got here is, it's called police transfers to provincial government, what is that account? Because there was no number with it, what is that account for?
You mean there's no?
I didn't see no number.
Sixty-nine.
So it's under police.
It's under police, yeah.
So, so the budget is ninety-six thousand, and then you mean there's a zero in the actual?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just got the invoice and uh, just signed the invoice off uh, for the full ninety-six thousand, so.
Okay.
So. And we'll show on your next statement as.
Yeah, okay, and the other question I got is, what was our uh. Builder for the back pay for the RCT, did we get one?
We don't get one, and I don't believe we will get one, because we weren't um, operating our own or paying our own. Detachment, and because we were under five thousand, so up until three years ago, we weren't paying anything. Then they slowly started now charging us, but my understanding is we won't be on the hook for any back pay.
Oh, okay, this is being on the news, everybody.
Yeah, like a lot of, lot of larger municipalities will pay their, will pay their police uh, contract in full. And uh, those are the ones that are still debating and arguing that they shouldn't have to cover that back pay, because they weren't part of. The negotiations on the new contract, so. So I don't believe that they will have any effect on us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
Yeah, questions? Motion to accept state revenue expense report, March twenty twenty-three, for information, also work, all in favor? Harry. Budget overview?
And that'll be crazy, Mr. King, because they're on the inch of the year.
I want to go on the budget distinction. Well, yeah.
What's that?
You don't know what they want, yeah.
Oh. Tracking everything.
Motion, Council, except for overview for March twenty twenty-three, information.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor? Six point zero four. Capital budget update. Uncle Cole, you're digging for one there? Well, I seen you get your old. You find what you're looking for, what's the problem? What's that?
I had everything pretty well written down, what I wanted to know and.
We've covered it, okay, here. Uh, council except first quarter capital budget update, December twenty twenty-three, for information, motion.
Well, how do you?
Council's a girl.
How they got your attention?
Well, I seen you put your head down, I know he's going for something here. All in favor? Harry.
So I guess it's us then, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, just wanna. Oh, sorry, I skipped, skipped one yet, no.
Community reports.
We did, didn't that what Fred, Fred did the other one, I jumped again. Yeah, you have the county, the community services board, yeah.
But there's no, there's no paperwork on it, there's nothing in there.
No minutes, well.
The minutes were real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're here, March twenty seventh, yeah.
Just like community reports.
I mean, well.
Yeah.
Fine.
Uncle Girl, you did that?
No, there's not much to add, uh, I'll speak more on it when we get to the. Business items, my, it's, it was, it was a long drawn-out meeting, that one, they were talking about the. Financials of all the stuff.
Two hours and twelve minutes?
Yeah. It's an hour meeting, but. No, a lot of discussion on everything, so. And everybody had a lot to say, so it was good to bring up what everybody had to say, so.
No other questions, council accepts the following community report. For information, community services board meeting, one thousand seven point three, Alton Bowden, all in favor? Harry. There you go, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do it once, well, it's fair.
Yeah, so just wanted to touch base uh, engineering projects, I did meet with Sarah uh, this morning virtually, so they haven't uh. They've started re-revisiting the drawings, um, based on the discussion from council the last uh, um, meeting. So we did go back, and they will be bringing them back again after they refine them, but we are looking at uh, um. Refining the, making the bulbs smaller, uh, we did go back still, whether council wants to change it or not, two bulbs on every corner. Not the cross ones, um, they couldn't find any place. In their research where anyone would have done that, and as Director Olson said, part of the rationale for it is pedestrian. Safety being able to shorten the crossing uh, segments, so we did eliminate the bulb at the town office. Uh, because it didn't, e- even though it maybe was a good spot, it's not necessarily appropriate to have one across the street, uh, just didn't fit. Um, and we did look at uh. Changing the two bulbs at the Memorial Park Royal Bank corner, making them smaller, almost just pedestrian one, because. The Memorial Park already has benches and seating areas in it. And Royal Banks, just the way that block is designed, it's a parking lot right on the corner, so. But we did have bulbs there, just so it continued the, the flow, but they'll just primarily be a pedestrian bulb without any amenities on them. Um, so we're gonna bring back, uh, remove the, uh, any trees from the project, so we're. They didn't have a chance to finish that all, but they will uh. Be kind of redrafting it, um, we'll have less uh, planters, less benches, uh, you know, because their bulbs are gonna be smaller too, so. Um, so we'll get that back when it's ready here, hopefully, maybe even by the end of the month. Um, other than that, uh, for my report, um. We did meet, I did meet with the pilots last week and uh. Went through the runway lighting project with them. So MPs uh, completing the final drawings here and and be wanting, able to go to tender here shortly on that project. Um. Did you have a question, councilman?
Um. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think so, that is due to the airport runway, right?
The lane, yeah, replacing the lane, yeah. Uh, I did want to bring uh. Couple of things to your attention. Um, in Kevin's report, I think the council's aware, the ice is out of the arena, um, moving on, I looked, I didn't get a chance to talk to Kevin today. La Crosse was supposed to be in there, or will be in there this Friday, uh, first, so they were painting the lines on the floor, we've got the nets uh. Ready to go, we'll see how that turns out, this will be their trial. Run at it, um, and the other thing I wanted to point out in Michelle's report, two, couple of things, so. Volunteer Appreciation Night, so just so you have this in your calendar, it is a week from today. At the community center, um, didn't see the time, but I'm thinking around six-ish, six to eight, um. It's been a bit of a rush, they've been trying to get a grant for it and been waiting to get some grant information back, but they haven't. Um, basically, Michelle and uh, Dravino planned it, and they're going with a different uh, format. Or maybe, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had marked down seven to eight.
Okay, you could, could be, I forgot to ask Michelle.
I think that's what she added.
Could be, so it's um, they're basically doing a speed dating. Um, night for volunteer groups, so they've invited all of our volunteer agencies in town. To come to speak to what their organization does, what their expectations are, what their commitments are, what type of people they're looking for. There will be some, some, some refreshments and some snacks, but versus having an entertainer or something, they've decided to try and change things up and. And uh, that's what they're, that's what the event is gonna be, so.
Since on Friday?
No. A week from today.
Yeah, April eighteenth.
I'm in.
Oh, Hannah, for the Acady Foundation, perfect.
Okay, so I wanted to bring attention to that, and as well the Hannah Family Marriage Therapy Program. So, looking through, Michelle did a very brief uh, run, the town's been a partner in that with special areas. Sterling County, and I believe the Ag Society. Um, the program's run for a number of years, it's been pretty, pretty small, the subsidies, it's based on your income. Uh, and how many sessions um, you, you take, but as you can see in twenty twenty, the subs. Seven thousand. Um, twenty twenty-one, that increased to twenty-five-two. And in twenty twenty-two, it was forty thousand eight hundred, so, good news is this service is being used, um.
And is that funding, like, rand rules have dramatically increased, or does pure usage has?
Pure usage, pure usage has uh, increased, so we kept provided twelve thousand dollars, and really had over X amount of dollars to. That program, um, when we bring spring budget adjustments back, we'll have an amendment to that, because looking at the statistics. Um, we should be paying a higher share based on the residents of our town that are using and accessing the service, so. Um, good news is it's going up, bad news is it's going up, so, um, I just want to let you know, because it's. It's a quieter program, it's not necessarily talked about lots, but uh, as you can see, it's, it's gaining. A lot of traction and uh, hopefully providing a lot of good service.
No bad news in that, to be honest, with this year, because in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, they needed it. But they didn't use it, so the fact that those services are being utilized, those are families that won't be broken. That's domestic violence that won't happen. That's abuse that won't occur. It's fantastic.
That's, that's the goal. Yeah, that's the goal. So I just wanted to let you know that it has seen a steady increase.
Where's the council man for that?
In the provincial building.
Yeah, there's two different groups. Uh, there's one that you can do over.
There's a remote, there's a remote virtual opportunity.
That's right here in town. And, uh, well-used, and, uh.
There's a space that Lynx has, uh, in their space that is, uh, they're counseling, so. So that's, I just wanted to bring those to your attention, um, council, and if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question in regards to the downtown redevelopment project. Was there any consideration throughout their whole? Um, plan in regards to public washing facilities? I mean, we're seeing this more and more in different places and different locations. We want to draw and attract people. But we're expecting the businesses, uh, to open their doors to use their facilities. So I'm just wondering if in all of that, there was any consideration?
I don't, I don't believe so, uh. I don't believe so, councilor. I, I, even from eight-one-eight, I don't really, I don't believe that was any. Part of the discussion brought up. Interesting, it's an interesting. Position, um, you know.
I think there was some discussion of as far as spray paint, we need any support around the rodeo time and that sort of thing.
But there's nothing in this downtown, which, you know what, just as I've been watching and just observing, you know, what we're trying to do. And that, you know, the dollars that we're being given, I, I just don't know if that might be something we would look into or a consideration. Uh, I know they're kind of into the process already. It was never brought up as far as I can remember, so I just wondered if it was something that wasn't ever.
I, I don't think, I, it didn't, I didn't think about it. Uh, I haven't heard it as part of any of the discussion, but I guess whether it's something. You want to go down the road with, it's always an option. The town does own some land in that, um. Area that, uh, it could be, there's pros and there's cons with that, um. And again, it's another level of service that, uh, um. You'd have to be picking up and covering and, um, you know, opening closings or whether you leave them open. Twenty-four-seven and and whether there's any vandalism or.
Well, there is, I know in other jurisdictions, there is a limited amount of time. I think we have these pop-up businesses around town. Where, what facilities are they using? What do they have access to? There's not an outhouse behind those facilities. I mean, if, if this is. What we're considering, I, I just think, you know what, it might be a consideration to.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good, it's definitely something to, to pause thought on, definitely one hundred percent.
Isn't, isn't there, uh, washrooms at?
Hector King Hunter there is, but not in the downtown.
But are they, are they ever? Like available?
Yeah.
They're open every day?
Same with, uh, the ball diamond by the museum, washing.
And the, and the triplex ones one, uh.
And there's never been issues with vandalism, has there?
King Hunter's been banned.
King Hunter's been vandalized a few times.
But I think that's it. I think the ball diamonds have been good.
It's a great question.
Yeah, no, it is. It is definitely food for thought, uh, councilwork one hundred percent. I know, I hear struggles of primarily more in the larger centers. That have them and some of the challenges that they, they're going through with them, but, uh, it, I, I know we'll get to on a. I wouldn't say regular basis, but we will have people who are in the downtown core who will come here during the day and ask if they use a washing. So I'm sure a number of businesses probably, probably do as well, so. So, yeah, no, something we have to, can keep on the back of our, our minds as we move through this process.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
Um. I have a question regarding Centennial Place, um, and the mention that, um. There is a storm drain that creates a backup inside Centennial every spring. Is there any way to resolve that or?
Oh, I'll let Brett speak to it. He probably is more familiar with it, but.
Really, just due to the, um, how low it is? It just, it doesn't take us long to get through it, but. As we had trouble all year, freeze thaw, freeze thaw. Usually, but it always happens on a weekend.
It's a roof drain, correct?
It is a roof drain, it's off the roof. We thought instead of running it above ground, it would be easier to run underground. And, uh, just for the aesthetics of the building, and it's, uh. Showing that it, it's a problem.
Is there any, there's no way of rerouting it without?
Well, you could probably, and you could probably redirect it outside.
Yeah. It's pretty tough to do that, because, yeah, yeah. Being underground, um. I don't, like, we have heat trace out at the shop, and even if it gets really cold, they'll freeze. They do let themselves go, but. Usually, when we have trouble there, we're having trouble all the way down the main. Um, it's just one of them things is that freezing thought is, it cruises out. I don't know if there would be anything to look at. There was nothing at the Bamp show or, um, I never thought to ask any of the communities, of course. They deal with, uh, the catch basin is the same we do with the steam trucks.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, uh, I, I'd have to give it a look at it a little closer, uh, council board, but I, yeah, my, I believe it was, uh. It's a roof drain that is, is, comes down under the foundation.
And then it runs out.
Tries to tie into the storm main in the parking lot.
Yeah, it's about out to the middle of the parking lot, so it'd be a lot of heat trace, and, uh, I could ask, we can look and see if there's something.
Somewhere they're reserving or something. It'd be great for Arizona or something, but not.
The trouble, the trouble with it here, and I know it's a pain in the butt for these guys, cause it generally happens. On a weekend or an evening, but, you know, we spend a, an hour or two there and it's done, and so it's not a real cost. Costly expense for us to have to steam it out once or twice in the spring, but.
And the arena route does the same, but all the downsides are on the outside of the building, so. If it freezes, it just holds water on the roof, it doesn't cause an issue inside.
And you could put tape on it, maybe easier than whatever.
Exactly, just as I mentioned.
Thank you, that's just.
Yeah, no, good question.
I have, I only have one thing to, uh, and the volunteer appreciation. Is indeed the eighteenth of April, and it's from seven to nine.
And that's at Community Center, right?
Yes.
But I have been recruited, I think.
And is a restoration?
Yeah, you have to get an event, right? Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, there's a ticket to the, it's free, but you have to have the ticket.
Just to know numbers for the thing, so.
If you don't get on it. Or you said just.
I just got the information today, so you'll start seeing.
Yeah, we're, we're a little behind the gun on this one, so.
You'll start seeing it over the next couple of days, um, otherwise I have, uh, nothing further to add, as you're aware, we had to post photos again, unfortunately. Unfortunately, instead of the photographer, so I will be. Reaching out to see what would be a good date for council.
I see in your report, you have some zero copier issues. Do we not rent that machine?
No, we got a. Very big deal on the purchase.
But we are, um, we do pay a service fee as part of our copy charges, so. It, it's just that it's in the photocopier age, it's getting old and. Having trouble finding parts, so, but yeah, we got a really good deal on it. It's been here. Since we moved, just what, since we've been here, um, seven years ago, so.
It pretty much shuts us down when it's not working properly. For some jobs anyways.
With the volume of pressing, certainly true. Is there, um, is there an advantage to owning it other than, like, obviously you can get a really good deal on one, but.
Well, the, the, the advantage to owning it versus leasing it was significant at the time. I'm not to say if we go to an RFP. Um, it might be more advantageous to lease it, um, and purchase it, but generally when you're leasing it, you're paying the finance charge. Anyway, so generally, if you have the ability to purchase it, it's generally the best, that's the way you go, so.
Is there resale option or?
Um, there might be, I, I don't know, Councilboard, if there would be much value in it, it's, um.
If it's poached, it's not worth it.
Well, I guess. You get into five and seven years and it's, um, people aren't too interested in it, so.
So is that something you should start working for, is that, uh?
Well, we're gonna do some work on.
No, I just.
Yeah.
I'm good, I just.
Yeah.
Brett?
Normally, I would have nothing to add.
But.
Um, but we are getting no runoff. At all. The creek by my place. Um, that normally fills with rocks, lake, and of course, if you've been by Watts Flats, there is nothing, the snow is gone. Um, so there will be water in the creek, but I don't believe it's gonna flow, won't take long to be. To be gone, so that's unfortunate news, but, uh. People have been driving out, running up the road just to see.
Just to see if there's any there.
Can definitely see that there's nothing there. Um, and just to give you guys a heads up with this quick thaw. Wasn't coming, now it's here. Um, we will be, we just got our Apex Agreement. To put up the crosswalk signs on the new trail, so we're gonna get a date and we'll get them up here shortly. You'll see that. Um, Top Notch, which is our, uh, sewer manhole restoration guys. He, uh, was here this morning. They always give us fifty thousand dollars worth of work. And only charges twenty-five per year, so you get two years worth of work done right away so that it's worth them coming. Uh, apparently, they're going to Banff first and then High River, and then they'll be here, so they should be here by the end of the month. I think we have about sixteen sewer bottoms and, uh, we have. Four storm drains we'd like to look at. Um, and with that happening, we're going to start sewer flushing probably sooner than we thought, um, so. We'll put out a notice, notice with Lori that if you have a smell in your basement. Run your taps, we've probably sucked your traps dry, but, um, so we will start that as well as street cleaning. Sweeper is, Wes has worked on that, did all the servicing and it's ready to go. Um, so those are some of the stuff you'll see us doing that I did not put in the report. That will be on right away, and other than that, if there's any questions.
You'll be putting some. I'm sorry. You'll be putting signs for street cleaning?
Uh, yeah, we'll try to do that.
Street sweeping is a harder to. Judge, we'll put out stuff on social media, definitely, that we're going to start, street, streets.
And what areas to watch for us, but yeah, Kim's right, putting it up is a little harder than smoking.
Okay.
Cause sometimes we can cover a lot more than we wanted to, sometimes.
Sometimes it's quicker, depending on how much sand and dirt's on the road, sometimes it goes faster now.
Yeah.
But we'll definitely try to go every day and say, we've done here, we're moving to this location, please watch for the street cleaner, move your vehicles. If you can.
Thank you. Um, plot holes? Is that you or is that?
We've already started. We have bought some stuff from Home Hardware that allows us to put it in with the water. Of course, the water breaks it out with it freezing. Minus twelve, it's popping it. We do have, um. A decent amount of cold mix. I'm gonna have to order more, but we do have probably ten yards, and we've been putting in a loader bucket and warming it up. So as soon as the water's done running through them, we will, uh, do them as well.
Just a few that were really nasty this year.
Just, yeah, send me if they're bad and we haven't seen them, just. If you can, send me a notice or let Kim know, and, uh, we'll get on top of them right away.
Mr. Mayor, Brent, I'm just curious, um, if we have any, um, compensation. I noticed on one of our boulevards two years ago, you guys put brand new sidewalks in there, and it is. Chipping out like crazy.
We can, we can get Mudrec to look at it. Problem is, is they blame the kind, the cement guys and the cement guys may blame the finisher. But Mudrec has been pretty good. Um, we'll have them come take a look at it and see.
Thank you. I think it's just disheartening after all that work that went into it and it's like, I mean, it looks terrible.
It's pebbled.
Yeah, it's just cut like more and more, it's breaking away on it and it's.
And our ground moves so bad, like even the new stuff up around Shaker is cracked already just because of the, um. So, but we'll, if it's falling, sometimes he's pretty good, so.
You might want to look at it and see what severity level it's at, but, yeah, right at the corner there is, yeah, thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Oh. I, I just have to mention that, um, I was driving down, I saw a, uh, AMS. And then I looked in my mirror and there was Brent behind me in a white truck. And I just want to let people know that. I know I've had a beef about a white truck, but that that truck is also not for the town, it's also for responding for, um, fire, and so I appreciate that, and. And if, I wish you'd have laid on the horn. Tell me to get off.
Sometimes that causes worse. If it was a structure fire, like I knew we had lots of guys coming, and the other benefit to using the town truck, I have a radio. So, um, if I'd have known, like, if it was a structure, you'd have heard from it.
Well, I just want people to know that that is greatly appreciated. I don't know that many people are aware. That you're the deputy fire chief and that you respond to almost all.
Try to, yeah.
Almost all the, the calls and stuff, so I greatly appreciate that, that it was your place. Anyway, so I apologize for not, but if you see a white truck coming up and you had flashers on it. Or if you see some truck, uh, vehicles that are speeding along with flashers, they're most likely volunteer fire. Fighters that are heading to the station to get dressed to go on a call, so. I just want to thank you all for everything that you do for our community and. I end up reading my words every once in a while, so. I might take a bite today, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to accept. Your. Motion to accept community services for, uh, uh, two points. There we go. Motion to accept, Council Senior Administrative Reports eight point zero one, two point zero three, for information. Councilwoman. All in favor? Very. Eight point zero one. Twenty twenty-two, our financial statement. We just need a motion, kidding.
Yes.
Uh. Motion from council, we approve the twenty twenty-two financial statements presented by SN Attorney Accountant, but here's what goes. And the twenty twenty-two statement, we advertised and made available to the public for the town to have a website and the town office during regular business, our rear, so. Motion. What's called? All in favor? Very. Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you got your stats in your packaging. See, it's been pretty steady again. We had twenty-six incidents for first quarter, which is actually up. Three from last year's first quarter and last year, if you remember, was our second busiest year ever, so. It's not real encouraging that things are gonna slow down anytime soon. As far as membership, we're actually full at thirty members. Um, again, when we're selecting new members, it's always a priority that. We try to find members that'll fit in with the group we have, cause. It's cheaper and easier to keep them than to have to keep replacing them, so, um, quite happy with our retention right now. Uh, we've only, we just filled our one opening here a short time ago, this two, I guess, and if you should be starting quickly tomorrow. Yeah, another girl, yeah, we were getting a little low there, we were down to two, so this brings us back up to three, so. Uh, training wise, uh, regionally, we're in the middle of, uh, NFPA ten-on-one firefighter one course, it's got twenty-nine students in it. Five of them are from Hannah Fire Department. And this weekend, they get to learn about hoses and nozzles and fire hydrants, um.
Yay.
We made the, made the deputy chief happy by her taking it to Oian. So he's quite happy that we're not playing with his. So impressed, cause last time we brought, or last time we showed the weakness of two of their hydrants, so I'm saying we broke, exposed, we exposed the weakness. Um, this is the first course or part of the course that Oians hosted since coming out of COVID, so they're happy to have everybody back. They're planning lots for us this weekend, so. Um, we were also successful in obtaining some grant money for regional training from the province. Reenacted their fire emergency training program. Unfortunately, the program is very oversubscribed, so we only got a small portion of what we applied for. But anything's better than nothing, so this funding will be used to offset course costs for one course. That will start probably this fall or early next spring, we can't use it on our existing course, cause. It had, can't have started the course prior to the signing of the grant agreement, so. But uh. Twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents. You you know what I applied for, right? Like ninety-six thousand, just to. Show what we needed, but.
Cause there was only five hundred thousand across the province.
Apply for twenty percent, I guess under twenty percent, so.
What is the average cost per course?
Two thousand dollars a firefighter. So, going rate, so we usually do a class twenty-four, so you're forty-eight thousand dollars to run one class twenty-four. Right now, we're running a class twenty-nine, so basically it'll knock five hundred dollars off per student. For the next course we do, so every, whatever municipalities have students in that course, we'll get that five hundred dollar student break for it. We'll be able to show to expend it all in one line item for that, so. Won't take very long to show that we've spent that money, so. Yep, medical assists are up. Uh, training tower update, as you probably heard, we weren't successful in getting our CEPET grant. Um, then they basically informed us to quit applying. They quoted was. Community facility enhancement program, so it was a stretch, it was a stretch. Their comment was, and I quote firefighting equipment should be the responsibility of the municipality to fund. Okay, that's a slight hint, uh municipalities don't qualify anymore for CEPET, we used to. Ten plus years ago, maybe longer now.
Been quite a while.
Cause I know we got a CEPET through the town once for radios and breathing equipment and stuff that we're able to do.
What about structure, like do you need a new window covering and stuff?
No, they don't wanna do nothing, they're figuring out that fire associations are really. A backdoor way of funding by your services with, though. Yeah, for grants, right? So we reduced the scope of the project, ordered props as we were talking about earlier, the uh. Budget expenditure for fifty percent was the two hundred and twenty thousand. So we'll hold another hundred and ten when they show up and another hundred and ten when they're actually put in service. Um, so. The original project, we got this down to four hundred and forty stuff to do, the prep work and the concrete, but over and above that. But originally, we've probably knocked about a hundred and forty thousand off trying to shave it down to where we got enough money to move forward with it. So we're hoping we don't run out of money. Uh, we're doing an open house on.
Can you inform council what you're getting for the four hundred and forty thousand? What props?
We are getting a full quad and a half quad. Full quad will have three props on it, it's capable of four props, but we went with a hazmat tank that takes up two spots. And we went with a barbecue, so that we get our propane and can do the signs of a blevion, a relief valve letting off. And we went with a flange prop, so what you'd see out, no oil field or down at the power plant. Just a simple type coming out of the ground, goes to a flange with maybe a valve and goes back down. Cause that's where the gas gets given out and you can have fires occur. So that's a big one to have the flange prop, and then the half quad's gonna have a car. On it and we can set it up to have a trunk fire or an engine compartment fire, plus we'll have in cab fires, so.
Do you have any for electric vehicles?
No, not out there, um. You laugh. The lithium batteries on the electric cars. Is what you get is what's called thermal runaway and you'll get it per cell, that's why it'll just keep burning, you can't put them out. There's guys using dumpsters and dropping the car in and sinking them, there's no point, move the car. From away from any structures and let it burn, just let it burn to the ground, there's, you're not. Easily gonna put them out, so as long as you can get them away, and we're lucky, we don't have a lot of underground structures or multi-level structures where, how would you get them out of there? Although there's deals coming up now with tow trucks coming with arms to lift underneath, lift them, drive away with them. Without affecting the tow truck and then set it somewhere where you can let it burn. It will damage some pavement if it starts to happen, you know, you could have damage, but. There's not a lot you can do about them, um, there's some good courses, we've been looking into it, there's one coming out of Banff right now, it's pretty good.
So we're gonna see more of these, if it happens in our community in the middle of the street?
Yep, you might see the engine throwing a winch line on it and winching it. Away from the curb out into the middle of the road to get it away from the building, I mean, we'll start, we'll try to put them out. And if you can get the car out before the battery is on fire, that's a big difference, but once the batteries are on fire, one cell. What were they saying, one cell could throw fire thirty feet? Thirty foot flames off one cell and there can be hundreds of cells in those batteries, uh tow truck operators. Fires out, tow truck guys take them back to the impound yard and they light on fire hours later. In the impound yard, so all we're telling people basically if we get one is. Move it away, put it out, put it somewhere in a field where it can sit by itself and not harm anything if it lights on fire again.
How much, what percentage of the population do you think people have an understanding about these situations? Because you know, our younger generation, you know what, if they can come into the funds. You know, lots of them are driven to think that, you know, the electric car is hard to have and we hear more and more. But the, you know what, the logistics and the liabilities for this car, what we're seeing more and more of. Is is huge, and I mean, I always use this scenario in Merritt V C when they had the big floods. They got the tanker trucks out of, in there and they got the vehicles in there that were fuel um driven out, those electric cars floated on. And I mean, there's so, there's just so much risk with them.
Things people don't realize is how heavy they are, they are extremely heavy. Like over twice the weight of a normal vehicle, a lot of them, so suspension problems. Airbags give out easy, so you can't even get underneath to fight the fire if the battery's. Uh, flaming down. Air suspension goes right away on them, soon as you have a fire, and now they're like basically tight to the ground. There's a company making a suppression tool to stick under it and to go up in and puncture each cell, the battery and flood it, but.
Creating a bond.
Uh, we're getting on the list, uh, get, I liked the program, the one Captain out of Banff fires doing on his own on his days off. It's, he's got some good cutaways and. It's looking like it's a good program, we had a couple guys from special areas that took it just in the last few weeks, probably three weeks ago. So we're gonna look at hosting one of those down the road here, they're, they're coming, we're gonna get more and more of these vehicles here all the time.
I just concerned about the logistics, I mean, living in a high rise and knowing that all those electric vehicles are parked in the lower level. I mean, we're hearing more and more problems happening.
Anything with lithium, there was an e-bike fire in Calgary the other day. Uh, any of the scooters that are lithium, any of the e-bikes, uh, a lot of that stuff now. Is where the big problems are coming in, lithium batteries are great until they're not. Once, but once they get hotter on fire, you're not putting them out other than total submerging and even then. It seems like you take them out of the water eight hours later and things dry out and they might fire back up again, so. It's a great thing they created for us and all this new energy efficient, whether it's hydrogen, whatever it is. Is all creating us. Challenges and more training and higher level, higher danger, I mean. You knew what you have with diesel and gasoline, right? But we went through this with propane back in the early nineties when propane became the big. You know, way of power of powering vehicles, everybody's converting their gas vehicles propane, we were paying three cents a liter. We went through this then too with propane in the early nineties, so. Will it out?
Thank you.
Last time I had was the open house, which is going to be on Wednesday, May tenth. Doors are gonna open at the fire hall at five thirty, there will be burgers and hot dogs starting at six o'clock. It's a emergency preparedness and fire prevention combined event. We partnered with special areas, we'll have some wildfire preparedness component, cause special areas got a. Wildfire preparedness grant, so we gotta make sure we have that front and center. Uh, it's gonna start at five thirty, supper at six, or burgers and hot dogs at six. Um, I've got Lori and Michelle both assisting, focusing on their roles, putting on their emergency management. Hat, so Lori is reacting, working out, I think, or maybe Lori will disagree, we'll see, but. It's working out pretty good, working with special areas because our Lori's our public information officer. When we go into an emergency management role and she's having to work with Megan and Candace and some others over there, so faces are sitting across the table getting to know. Each other, same with Michelle's, our E S S, our emergency social services and that's, special areas will admit that's where they. Really don't have a lot of plans on that, cause normally they don't have to worry about refining and some of the more recent stuff. If they're coming in from the rural or from the highway, the urban's gonna end up dealing with them, but if they're coming out of the rural setting, so we're partners on all that, so. Everybody's been involved in the planning of this and I've just been sitting back and watching the emails and it's kinda getting looked after, so. I appreciate the help from Lori and Michelle on it, cause it's been great. And hopefully you guys can come, we're going to run the burn tower that night, weather permitting of course, but. Um, we won't have everything going in there, but we'll have some of it fired up, so you get a chance to see what the firefighters see inside and. Especially the outside stuff, once it becomes dark, I'm sure Brent will have it burning up pretty good, so. That's his, his role that night is uh running the burn tower and not burning any people up, so. Focus on that part, any other questions on fire stuff, Mark? And yes, Mister Mayor, your medical assist are up and we've done. Six calls in April already and three of them are medical assistance who were N B A, so we're still seem to be busy on that front. Patient care seems to be a major thing that we're doing.
Well, it's he do more and more ambulance calls, like the last three days, I, three times.
And we've been on two of them. And, yeah, I do have a meeting with, which I keep forgetting to mention to the deputy chief and hopefully you can make it. I do have a meeting on Thursday at eleven AM with Fire Hall with um. Our medical first response coordinator and with Dempsey, Dreadland Emergency Medical, so Betty Landis and some her people. And just trying to streamline how some of stuff's working within that, this is where we're getting some calls that we shouldn't. But they are on them and it's getting confusing to dispatch, so. We're trying to iron out some of that stuff, hopefully Thursday, again with COVID, none of these people could come up and visit after the last. However, many years, so looking forward to having John and I bringing one other person out from Calgary with them, so should work out good. Development, not much to add, you've got my report there, um, eleven in the first quarter is exactly what we had. Last year, other than one of these did get withdrawn, so I guess technically we have ten now, but seems to be on par with last year's uh. Permits, I'm expecting, already seeing it today or last two days since. Yeah, well, I guess it's one day, yeah, a lot of them would come in, I even had somebody yesterday phoning me going, are you open today? I'm like, yeah, I'm open. Oh, no way, let me in, I said, what? Yeah, town office is blocked, I'm like, oh, sorry, I thought they were calling me for work, work, not for, I, I didn't have the right hat on, cause it was on my cell. So the guys are calling, but I'm off today, I'm like, well, here's my address, so he came down to the shop and dropped the stuff off to me at work and. And that, but I noticed a couple on my desk today when I was in already, crutches. We're seeing like a people that are, I guess, woods come down a bit, so some guys that were holding off, hadn't built crutches last year. Cause of the cost of material are being told by their contractors, get on the list now, it's a good time, so I suspect we'll see a bump. Maybe in the second quarter with graduating fences from compared to last year, I'm hoping. Um, any questions for development?
No, may I ask one regarding fire, so with the water. The fact that there is no runoff, are you then expecting uh fire to be an issue this year again?
Well, it's two things, uh, right now it's dry, veteran fire was out on the weekend already on the first grass fire that we know of in special areas. So it's already starting. The far as runoff, that's gonna affect us on the lack of dugouts available to draft from, now our first primary response is always with their tender. We got three thousand gallon water truck, we can mutually off other departments, our first initial won't be bad, it's if it's big. And we need to try to find water, it's gonna be miserable. Um, basically, if we're within six to ten miles of Hannah, we'll come back to town. Just because we can roll faster through hydrants than drafted.
I know Christiansen's, well, last year kept everyone deep load on water trailer at all times.
I think most farmers do keep water on, on a trailer in dry periods and stuff, but.
Quite a few do, it's um, it's always nice if we have some good dugouts, um, we'll see what they look like here. Once the snow melts off them, if you can see them or not, if you can see them when you're driving by, they're not usually too bad, it's when you can't see water in them that. You gotta get up close and take a look, but, yeah, no, it's, could be a. I was happy to see rain this morning, but I wasn't happy when it quit right away, so. Emergency management, not much to add, we did the MEOC as all of you know, thanks for everyone showing up for that, I hope you. Liked that municipal elected officials course.
Yeah, it was good.
Um, it took us a long time to get one here, and I apologize, it's just been a year of. Struggling to seem to get that course, um, we kinda lit a bit of a fire under the province when we went private on it, cause. They started asking questions and then had to kinda pull back and go, whoops, our bad, so our, our rep retired. Now the end of February, I think it was, so we have a new rep, so hopefully things will improve on that. And yeah, uh, too bad we didn't have more from the region taken, but it was a little short notice, so you guys got to know the mayor. Village veteran a little bit, so. And again, the open house is kind of a joint thing between fire and emergency management, any questions?
So Mister Mayor, we got three motions.
He didn't stop me, I wondered if he was gonna.
Uh, first motion is uh, Council September Fire Department twenty twenty-three, first quarter report, January to March twenty twenty-three. Uh, thank you Fire Chief Kable for your presentation this evening, motion, Council Murphy, all in favor? Harry. Development, uh, council accepts C town and panel. Development purpose statistic twenty forty-three, first quarter activity report, thank you officer, in the adult lots David Mull for his presentation this evening. Motion, Council Olson, all in favor? Harry. Emergency management, council accepts town or hand which to develop in emergency management twenty twenty-three first quarter report. For information and ratings director, lives management David Mull for his presentation this evening, motion. Council and bold, all in favor?
I paused.
I think we're gonna take a.
That sounds great, thank you.
Yeah.
So it's not, I know everybody gets worried when they hear first reading. But first reading basically then takes that document and that is the document and we take that document and we can work from. That document. It's a working document. So if there's any amendments, any changes, anything that can be addressed at that time, I would suggest we probably wouldn't make. Any significant amendments to the next version until after the public hearing. And then you'll have heard comments from from residents who have issues with specific components of the. Land use by law and then they can be taken under advisement following a public hearing and then there may be significant amendments that may be. Been brought forward at second reading stage.
Well, sir.
I have a request, information that I submitted. Due to direct control and heritage were for Calister's information only. Can I ask it to be removed? Removed from the.
The report, this report.
Okay, so anything that was submitted to me by the deadline, I'm sorry, I took that as. Feedback for the report. Um, it, I guess that would be council's motion to accept it for information minus. As amended and the council would choose to to remove some of that information.
Is that, is that possible?
Yeah.
It cancel.
Because it was basically to give you some history as to what went on with our experience on that and I don't think anybody else needs to know.
Sure, yeah. So if council chooses to accept it for information minus whichever information you choose, like you put forward a motion on the floor. To accept this information minus and then specifically state which sections you'd like deleted and then we can delete it. And get your revised copy that council accepts for information.
I don't know that it needs to be revised. It's our, everybody's already seen it already as far as here, but going to further public. Um, is nobody else's business. I think it's, I'd like it kept within um, our. Like within contact. As you've already presented it.
Yeah, well, I think we should, we should amend it that.
Yeah, okay.
If there's some particular comments you want removed from the.
Yeah, it's just history as to, nobody else needs to know that and it was for for your benefit and I'm sorry, I maybe. Didn't realize it was going to be on this level as well.
Well, we tried to correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, the the. Plan was to, we didn't wanna not include any comments. We wanted to take whatever comment was given. Whether it was a sticky, whether it was a verbal comment, whether it was written.
Yes.
We wanted to make sure we had everything and it was all inclusive as to what was said.
And and I apologize. I I thought it was staying the thing. And that was my misunderstanding and I should clarify that, but it was for information purposes only.
Sure.
For Paliser.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you.
So then we, so council roll.
So with this second version. Is it gonna be presented just like this one was or are we just gonna give a booklet? Or we're gonna read it?
Um, so the, when it comes forward. When a new document comes forward for first reading, um, there would be another staff report to go with it. And that staff report would outline again the changes that were made. So yes, you'll get a whole new version. Um, a presentation from either administration or from Paliser. And a document explaining, you actually even see a redline version. So you'll see in track changes version. If something's been deleted, it will be red texted and strike through. If something's been added, it will be noted as added text. Um, so it'll be easy to see the differences, but yes, you'll get a whole document and a presentation and an explanation.
Another new body.
Anyway.
Another new body for my track.
Yes.
So any, any questions, comments, uh, now's the time Tracy's here, Devon's on too, if there's anything. Um, do you wanna ask him or? Um, he can address, but uh, this is the time, I guess, we wanna. This is the direction administratively we'd like to go, but we wanna. See if council's on the same page as us in terms of of moving forward or what they see the next step as.
So when will be the? Next step?
What's the time?
That date, I'm not sure timeline, we'd have to touch base with Tracy. I, I think. Um, probably there's a potential that we could have. The earliest we could have first read would be our first council meeting in May. I'm not sure if I'm, I I can't see. The timeframe, I know it's the what, the eleventh today? So I think our next council meeting is May ninth, so. If not, it would be a, a, at the June council meeting, that's the latest.
Potentially, yeah, there's a, I would say based off the amount of comments that we did get and a lot of it is very good comments, like I'm really happy with the amount of engagement. That we did get from Hannah residents and businesses. Um, it will take a while to analyze this. It's not a fast thing, like it took me. Twenty plus hours to put together the report of all the feedback that we got, organize it to categorize it. So then to be able to take that and analyze it and make that into. Changes and then review those changes with the administration, uh, both the TA and the development officer who deal with this information. It's going to take. A while. Yeah, it's gonna be quite a bit of work to get it to that next stage.
And then it's, and then it's working around schedules too, so.
Yeah.
But again, it's one of those things we don't want it to. We don't wanna lose track of it. We don't want it to drag. We we wanna, you know, try and keep moving it forward. But we wanna move it forward at the pace. Come, council's comfortable with at that pace, moving it forward. So the council said to us, uh. Yeah, June, July, whatever, certainly we would. Follow your pace, but we don't wanna lose. Not that I, we wanna lose momentum, but we don't want it to kinda be an afterthought in people's minds that, oh, we we kinda forgot about it. We wanna keep it. Still out there and fresh in people's minds that that the process is still moving forward and. But we don't want the impression and we don't wanna, we don't wanna rush it just to to rush it and and get it and get it done. So and and I think. When we get to the stage of, obviously, when we get to the stage of giving it first reading, council will also have to then set a date for a public hearing. So normally, as councils are aware, our public hearings are fairly short, sweet. Uh, we do them uh, in conjunction with a normal council meeting. Uh, we're thinking. That's not gonna be the case. Uh, we're either gonna, I'd have to talk about with council. Whether we're going to. Have started on a Wednesday at nine AM. And start it and then whoever uh, wants to come forward and bring their concerns forward. One, this respective components of the land use by law that, you know, we have time to. Listen to everyone, um, bring their concerns across. And I know Tracy's been involved in some that went for three days. Um, I'm not anticipating three days here, but I am anticipating, you know, a significant period of time. You know, whether it's three or four hours um, to hear the comments, questions people have, and that's just a guess. It could be more, it could be less, but. We're not gonna do it in the evening, so whether we. Plan to start at one in the afternoon and go or it's at nine in the morning, I I think we have to change our thinking in terms of. How this looks and we may even have to change venue. So we have to look at a, a community center or a larger venue. This room isn't made up to have a lot of people in. So we wanna make sure whoever's there, whoever wants to speak is. Comfortable and and there's room and and stuff. So we would be looking at a different time for sure and. And a significant period of time and we'd be looking at a different location, so.
So would that be more of a one on one then or?
No. No, that's just like our public hearing that you would run. Um, Mr. Mayor, you would basically. Administration between Tracy and myself. Uh, whatever would would provide the background on the land use by law, why we're here. Uh, that's a, that's a, but then it gets turned over to, um, Mr. Mayor be asking if anybody's here to speak in opposition to the land use by law and that will be there. The people who have opposition to whether it's parts of it, all of it, whatever would be, have their opportunity to speak to the land use by law. Then there will be opportunities for people as you normally do who are in support of it. Um, we'll close it, but we have an obligation to. You know, allow anyone who wishes to speak to it to uh, to speak and if they don't wish to speak or can't be there. If they submit letters, they will be part of the package, whether they're in opposition or or or, you know, su- support of it, so. We're anticipating a much longer public hearing than we normally have, so.
Go on, just.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, Tracy, this has been a long and cumbersome process for, you know, I know for all of us. But as a first time counselor, like I have a computer set up on my kitchen counter. It seems like I'm always referencing and cross referencing. And it is a lot of work and understanding and I'm just wondering if there was a different process. You know, the town bylaws, we review them. Portions of them over time and we have time to think about them, gather input, um, sit and, you know, process it. And I'm wondering if there would be. Or has it ever been done that we could do um, land use bylaws in the same process? I mean, it also provides, you know, more comprehensive input um, for our public and ourselves, more feedback. And I think maybe even some better decision making rather than trying to storm through this. I mean, we have other things to, and I'm just throw this all out there because as I think about this. Over the last little while, it it's a huge piece and and for me, I wanna make the right decisions for my public. And I'm thankful for everybody that's, you know, um, spent the time and gotten right into the bylaws. It's challenged myself and I know many others have been challenged too. Our Mara says he just carries the book and is is is, you know, is. Truck all the time now. I'm constantly going to my computer and referencing what's there, but. Is there a process that's different than what we've used? I know it's been ten years, which. In my opinion, may be problematic in of itself, but instead of, and you know, I've tried to. Dissect this into thinking, well, how would you, you know, section by section or what sections? But I, you know what, if there was a different process and I, you know, I guess in previous years, there may not have been so many concerns. And it may be in the future years, but there might not be so many concerns, but there might not be so many changes either. So um, I'm just wondering, you know, going forward, if there would be a different process that we could consider as the co- as a counselor. And and as a community for our public and and all involved view as well, because I know this has been a a huge piece, like you said, you've spent. Twenty hours and you know, when I've spent the last two days just reading those, those few pages that you, you know what, that you put together with. Those input, which I feel is very valuable and I appreciate all that input that was brought forward. But I I just keep thinking there has to be a better way.
It's challenging. I would, land use bylaws are challenging, they're highly technical documents. Um.
And they're, they're large documents, like most of our bylaws. Two pages to.
Right.
Twelve pages and this is a hundred and some pages. It's a, it's a significant difference.
Yeah. So some of the different processes that you could consider in the future, um, and it really depends on the scope of the review. Some municipalities. When their bylaw is at a stage where. Um, they're not doing major sections or reorganization of sections, or if you're moving things from one place to another, which in the case of this bylaw. Your old bylaw needed, or the current bylaw needed a lot of reorganization. There were things in funny places and to meet. To make bylaws easier to read, in particular land use by law, it needed some serious work and but in the future. Sometimes what municipalities will do is. If you know you're not gonna be moving sections and things around or changing any districts, you could review and it's. You probably would want your advice going through this process, but you have. First reading and second, third reading of. Replacing one section at a time, but you'd have, you know, if you have seven sections to your bylaw, you'd have seven separate. Public hearing processes and then at the end, you'd have a bylaw to consolidate them all at once.
Well, the challenge I see though with the two Tracy is that you're gonna be working in. Six, seven different versions.
Yeah, so that's, that is a way that some municipalities have done it. I would say there is a lot of challenges doing it that way as well. But it is another way. That's the only other way besides just replacing the whole bylaw at once and it's just the nature of land use bylaws. But there are other things that you can do during a process. Um, and it. It is again challenging because Paliser does have certain scope and limit of time that we can put into each project. Um, but you can do like upfront, um, some municipalities that I've worked. We did a year long process of reviewing a bylaw with the municipal planning commission. So where you have. Or municipal planning commission plus, you might put together a committee of members of the public. Who feel that they are interested in this and so you have a a separate committee of a land use by law review committee. And so, but that's more of a process than how you adopt a bylaw. But those are some ideas that you could consider in future reviews.
See, the other, the other comment I'll make too is, as we know, the land use by law is is a living document. So even as we go through the process and we have the public hearing and whether there's some amendments made, not made, however it goes. At the end of the day, once we get into the land use by law, it can be amended at any time. You know, if there's something, like I said, from the last ten years, it's been amended nine times. I think out of those nine times, they were all. Eight or eight of them were probably a rezoning. Change, not a change to any other part of the bylaw, but it was someone who wanted to rezone a piece of property they had. From R one to R two or or vice versa. So it was, uh, you know. Not a, a, a big amendment, but the, the land use by law is a living document and. And as you get into it and move forward through it, if there are. Questions, if there are concerns, I know everybody wants to get everything perfect. The first time, but if there are changes that have to be made or amendments that have to be made as you move down the the road, that can happen. Um, like I said, it's not a document we're stuck with and have to live with for ten years. It could be amended. Three months after we, we've got into it, if there's something that comes up that or a need to 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 have it reviewed, but. We wanna obviously get it as close to where we think it needs to be. But uh, again, it's, it's not something that's written in stone and nothing changes for ten years. Um, there is always opportunities to change. Those applications for amendment can come directly from the town. The town can be the advocate, council can be the applicant that wants to to amend. Uh, amend the bylaw. Um, so there is opportunities there. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, like. It's not a document that we're gonna be, oh, we're stuck with this now. And gee, we messed up here and this would have been better. We have to come back for an amendment in a year. Because we find something, I mean, since we started with the draft. We lost the herald. You know, our advertising policy has come into place. Things changed in the middle of this already that. Can affect how we advertise and we've been dealing with that as to how to move forward with that. I got a question for Tracy. I noticed on one of them when I noticed. On the weekend when I was trying to read through this document, there was one suggestion like you shouldn't need a permit for a wheelchair ramp. In the front of your house, no matter where it's at. How are you handling the suggestions like that, that we both know that can't be because building code. Has rules about. Things like that and we can't have our land use by law. Contravene the building code. So how are we handling the suggestion from the public in this document that?
Um, like the, uh, Mr. Neil said, we haven't had time to.
Okay.
To consider anything yet in any detail. I literally took all the comments, wrote them verbatim into the report, organized them. And wrote the staff report. So how we deal with it will be, every comment will be analyzed.
So what would happen? Correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, but we would sit down, we would look at those comments and we'd start, someone had a comment about section one point one. This was their comment. Again, administratively, we're gonna look at and say, was that comment valid? Should we make an adjustment or? We're comfortable with what was there in the first version and we recommend no change. So we'll have to make those. Decisions such as the, the wheelchair disability round, whether there needs to be a permit or not. Um, there's a couple of questions in there about. Fence permit, do you need a fence permit? Um, those are discussions we can have and and bring them forward. Um, I personally like fence permits. Um, but I like them because then I know. When someone's taking a permit and they're gonna build their fence, they're gonna do it. Right, and we're not going back after them afterwards saying, you can't put a ten foot fence there. Um. So we've just had a situation the other day on that, so, um. But those are comments we'll bring forward and and I'm sure we'll have our, you know, they'll be redlined, but it'll be. We considered these comments administratively, we felt they didn't fit uh, for these reasons, or we didn't make a change for these reasons.
So Mr. Neil, then is it gonna be motion by motion? Like for example, if we don't want changes around residential acreages. Because there is going to be some changes around that. Does that has to be presented in a motion before second reading then? Is that how this is gonna?
No, it can be, it can be present. I would. It could be before second reading, but after the public hearing, I would wait till the public hearing, but it could be at at second reading, it can be a third reading. That document can be amended on third reading. Again, uh, council, we can have a draft in front of you. Maybe there were some amendments. Uh, after. Prior to second reading, we, that were approved by council, that would then become version three. And we would bring that document back for third reading. Again, if there's changes that need to be made at third reading. Uh, council could say, I'd like to to change. Um, section three point two under um, residential acreages to include this.
Okay, I have one more question then regards to that. Um, so if you have, you know, if you have one residential acreage on the south side of. Our municipality and one on the north side and you want to have a motion that only affects that one on the south side. Um, based on location and grandfathering, I know it's a word I shouldn't use, um, you know. Can it be specific to one particular parcel of land then that's getting was a um, and commercial or residential acres and RA to an urban? Um, is.
My comment would be no.
So anytime that any, and and I would suggest that council. Um, have faith in the process that we did hear what people were saying. You will see significant changes between the first document and the second version. Um, we were listening to people. If this wasn't a, we came out with version one and we think we're told and right.
We're done.
The, the draft was a, a draft for the purpose of discussion. It's us going out with our best efforts to try to address the issues that administration deals with in development permits. We didn't get it right, but we didn't expect to. It's, it's a place to start the discussion with. If you come out to the public and you say, we're rewriting our land use by law, tell me what you think. People are gonna sit there and go.
I don't know.
No idea, like what are you talking about? And they have zero interest in it. When you put something out in front of someone, you say, can you give me your, like, what do you think about this? And if you're trying to address something and it's. Very off or it works in this situation, but not in this situation, um, that's what gives us the opportunity to figure out. Do what, what makes sense then to to address these issues? Um, so I, I would say just. Be patient, give us some time to try to address what the public has said. Um, we did hear them. And yeah, if you don't like the way that something is written or the public comes back at the public hearing and says, my concern wasn't addressed. Uh, this, I still have this concern, then yes, you can make those motions, but I would suggest that. Um, like was already mentioned um, earlier tonight, there, you do have one direct control district in Hannah. That direct control district is unique for that property. If you wanna have something that's unique for a property, you need to create a direct control district. And otherwise, districts are standard throughout town. Um, I would suggest that direct control districts aren't a preferred method of. Um, regulating in your land use by law. Um, some municipalities, their entire land use by law functions as a direct control and it's very challenging. Yeah, I mean, you hear it, development officer having to work in that environment. It's not an easy environment. So what we try to do is write the districts to be, um. Good enough for almost everybody and then sometimes you might require variance. And that's okay, because that just means that some, it doesn't work in all cases. Um, but what we wanna get right is the uses. The uses are very important because you can't vary use, but any of the regulations that fall under a district, um, those can be varied. For those site specific uh, reasons.
Um, and I think that's what most people are looking for, because the minute you bring up, this is your property and thou shalt. We're all burdens, we freak out. I, I don't want someone to tell me I can't have my little apple tree in the corner of my backyard. So I get that and I think a lot of us on council, we get that. But it's an emotional group of. Because you're dealing with, they were really hard to have that little plot and boy, you know, you just want it right.
Say, um, as well, when you read through the comments, there was a very common theme where it said, you know, because I asked questions in the survey, you know, how do you feel about? This, like, should this be regulated? And everybody, not everyone, a significant amount of the responses said, no, you shouldn't. Except when, and then they listed the conditions there, it shouldn't be regulated. And so almost everybody agreed, no, it shouldn't be, except for in these cases. So there, there, people. Don't like to be regulated themselves, but they do like orderly development and they do like some regulation in place. And so it's getting those conditions right for the town of Hannah residents. And that's what we're trying to achieve with this by law.
And there's usually reasons behind it. Yeah, like if they're restricting the, the type of tree that you plant. It's because it's the best, the ones that they're restricting them to. Are for the, the trees that grow best in this area or, you know, less damage to sidewalks and roads and yada, yada, yada. There's reasons behind it.
But I wanna be careful, we don't.
We're not regulating.
If I could.
As an example, but, but, you know, yeah, no, just as an example, that there is reasons behind it and it's for the benefit of the community. And not every community is the same, so everybody has their own special thing, but there are reasons behind it.
And the people I've talked to, whether it was the open house or. Since then and prior to that. They don't wanna be regulated on what they're allowed to do on their property. But they want their neighbors regulated on what they're allowed to do on their properties, because it might make me unhappy with, if my mayor's allowed, or if my. Neighbor's allowed to have a twenty foot high fence in the backyard and I'm not, I mean, you know. So i- it, it's very much perspective thing. Counselor Warwick, to get to your comment about the acreages to the north compared to the acreages to the south. I think one of those ways would be to look at. Okay, most of our acreages work in the rural acreage or resident, sorry, residential acreage. But maybe this one worked better in urban reserve where it was prior. And in urban reserve, it's, it can still do what it wanted to do. That's another way of looking at it and that could be an easy. You know, after first reading at any time, that's where a change could come in and say.
Or even we may make that change prior.
We may make it prior and and go, you know what, I think this property here should be. Zoned to this, but I think on those individual properties, it's more important what the. Current property owner feels than what. Everybody else thinks they know for that property, because we're getting some conflicting uh. Stuff there where, you know, landowners that go, I'm happy with the new change, but everybody's gonna be mad at me if I don't. Fight it. You know, we've had some incidents of. You know, this delay has caused some grief with some people and Devon can allude to it, where we've got property in town and they're waiting for this to get passed, because it was gonna help them. With finances with the bank because of how it's being used compared to how it's zoned. And now we've had to say, sorry, this is gonna be months. And they're now going, well, what? You know, so it is having an effect on people by slamming the brakes on, because there's a lot of things, I mean, a lot of our. Our land use by law, correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, um, just doesn't meet municipal government act. Right? There's sections of it that were in conflict with the MGA, so.
And it never was addressed and the fact like the previous. You call, uh, um, councillor Olson and myself. We never addressed it, like it never was brought up for the food and chump to even look at.
And I don't think a lot of us were aware. I wasn't aware until. You know, you bring somebody new like Tracy and who knows the MGA good and then starts looking at your land use by law and I think. Going forward, if you were to back up in time and look at the revision done in O two and prior to that, they probably weren't big deals because there weren't a lot of changes. This is a significant power defining things, where we're showing the definitions, trying to make it so you don't have to jump around as much in the bylaw. So. Speed ahead and I won't be here in twenty thirty two, so I won't care thirty three, um, in this role anyways, we'll still be around, but, um. The. I don't think you'll see a big one again unless there's some major changes in MGA or something. I think this is a unique. Review that we're going through.
And it's not saying there were lots of changes in the MGA, it's just the fact that this didn't get addressed. And didn't really follow the MGA.
But your.
Changes, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, there were major changes, like very major. Yeah, and they even changed the name of the MGA to be modernized municipal government act.
Yeah, that's right.
That's how much they changed it.
So we probably.
It's the MMGA.
Probably should have been looking at this in twenty twenty would have been the time, but if you're not aware that it's an issue.
But we're also, because we're a member of Paliser, we're working within Paliser's resources.
So many years.
And they're doing, they got twenty six municipalities they're working for and. So we're, as they have their schedule, their resources, we get allotted into a specific timeframe. That's a, another reason why we wanna keep this going forward, because. There's other communities waiting for this work to be done. That Tracy wants to be able to wind this project up but have it done. That Tracy wants to be able to wind this project up but haven't done. And so she can move over, move on to help those communities with with their plans that they're waiting for to to undertake, so.
You don't wanna review through it for it one time?
I am.
I don't know how you do. I'm even now having to stop and go, okay, is that allowed in the current or is that in the proposed and I gotta. Pull up both documents and take a look now, because we've got so many. So much going on between the two documents, right? So.
And Tracy, I am honestly just asking some of this too, you know, I do trust the process. There, you know what, it's it's, you know, governance role and model, but you know what, it's just for understanding. For us as counselors and our public and what our advocacy is for our public and I just wanted to have some clarity around that, so thank you for that.
It is your biggest, bulkiest.
Oh, no doubt.
Most. Technical dry reading by law you probably have. By far.
I think it's more. Better than the M G A.
Yes.
I do.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I did have, I did have one quick comment. I'm not sure if everyone can hear me. Okay. Yeah, okay, I was just gonna speak to the timeline portion a little bit as well. Specifically around some of the M G A changes. So in twenty seventeen um to twenty nineteen and we saw a lot of those M G A changes occur. A big portion of that was actually requiring municipalities to now have M D Ps and I D Ps. Um and that was huge for Paliser because with twenty four different municipalities. All that were now required to have two different bylaws that they weren't at that time. Um that really took precedent for us over the past five years, just trying to get everyone caught up with that. Um and because of that, we know some of the landies bylaws review, landies by law reviews didn't occur as frequently as they probably should have, so.
Makes sense.
Counselor Olson, you had your hand up at one point.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, um when the version draft version two comes back. Um I'm hoping we get a list of this, what you saw report with is the comments of whether it was addressed or not as well. Um then that'll be pretty easy format to follow, we can match with the changes.
And again, after when version two comes back. Um you as a council will have to look at it. Closely too, because there might be some things that you thought administratively we would have changed that we didn't. And you might still think they need to be changed and that's. When you'll need to, or there might be some things we changed that you didn't think we would recommend changing you and you. You will be questioning us saying, well, why did you, why didn't you change it or why didn't you change that? And that's where we need to be able to provide our rationale and and whether. Um you agree with our rationale or not, that'll be up to you guys to decide forward. Fashion, but but do, once we get to version two and you get it and. And if there's things there that we, you thought we changed and we didn't, make sure you. Push us on every question as to why we didn't recommend that change.
Motion to council accept the what we heard report for information.
Just just a second, as as amended.
Okay, I have, I have one that I've decided that is. Twenty six point six point one provincial heritage designation. Those comments. Can we delete it? Yes, it is for the Hannah Roundhouse Society and that was meant for information for you.
Yeah, okay, so I will prepare a revised version and get it back to you.
You got that memorized, don't you? You know that number off my.
No, but I'll. Remember for tomorrow, yeah, thank you so much.
So revised information.
So I would, the motion would be that we accept the what we've heard reported for information as amended with the removal of. That section that.
Twenty six point six point one provincial heritage designation.
On page eleven and twelve.
Of the documentation.
So then the document, if this is passed as amended, then this document will be revised and that's the document that we were shared.
Thank you, and I apologize.
Take all in favor with the amended. Those votes, those work out.
Who who made the motion?
I will.
Okay.
It's all in favor. Counselor address. Uh council direct administration. And Paliser, you consider the feedback for the attached what we heard reported to prepare an updated draft. Land use by law version two for the first reading motion. What's worthy? All in favor?
Did you know?
Thank you.
You don't have to run away, Tracy.
Probably got things to do. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy, thanks, Devon.
Thanks, Devon.
Have a good night, thank you.
You too.
Like, what did Devon say? He's. On vacation, but I think he was, was that Starling? I think he, that was. Starling, right?
Yeah, I'm on Starling. Did it work? Okay.
Yeah, it worked good.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night.
Three point zero six.
Oh, that's you, Vern.
We said you wanted to speak at that point in time, so I do.
Yeah.
Big race.
Uh we uh.
Looked at all the. The charges that were being uh for the swimming pool, the ball diamonds, the hockey soccer. And the community service building and. We had a few suggestions there and we started to look and found. Nothing had been really changed from two thousand sixteen girls wanting pounders books and. We finally found some changes and so some of the members of the community service board thought, you know, uh. It was about time to make some adjustments because uh they haven't had any and. Wanted to make everything equal dollars, not twenty five cents here, twenty cents there, so it's all in even dollars. And. Uh. It was brought up, it was gonna be easier for the girls and guys that are doing the finances. It's. Better than having change, you didn't have to count a lot more. So what we did was we went through everything individually and. And we had rates from uh four different uh. The communities and we looked where we were sitting and where they were sitting. Uh for uh. A good example for the hockey to start with, we're fifteen to sixteen dollars. Deeper. Than what most of the neighboring communities were, so we. Thought it was uh time to uh. Get with the program and uh, you know, it's. Sound a little harsh, it looked like there was ten to fifteen percent in places where we jacked it up, but the cost of everything uh. Over last five and six years. Went up considerably, so we thought. Yeah, for charging uh. One, we thought we better do it all, so we went through everything with the hockey and uh was. There's significant changes in some and some went a little lower, but. It all went from uh five to fifteen percent and couple of one twenty percent. So it's uh. Everything now in our communities between Castor, Stettler, Gromaheller and Hannah and. And that now we're all pretty well equally. On the same board. And. That's how we come up with the hockey and then the swimming. Uh we looked, uh they didn't get in touch quite a bit, you know, over time and with a few people, but the as the. Lady that heads up our community service board, she's the chair of the.
See us.
Seals.
I know she's the chair, but she's on the executive.
Yeah, she's on the executive and uh. We looked at that and she. Thought, you know, everything else is going up and it was equal for the seals to take a hit, so we jumped them up by I think two to three hundred dollars.
That's bullshit.
No.
Six hundred.
Six hundred, but uh but no, but she uh. Now we looked at everybody else's record and uh, you know, and. And she figures she couldn't fit it into budgets and. And that's where we started there.
So I think the easiest thing, uh did you have question?
I just got a quick question, I know it's not my area, but when I I sat on community service here for seven years, chaired it for two and a half.
Yeah.
We were at that time targeting a cost recovery. Of the so much user pay and I forty percent kicks in my mind at one time where we weren't looking as as we looked at neighboring, but we were also looking at what's this facility actually lose a year? And let's try to recoup on each facility kind of, that we're trying to get there anyways.
Know if they spent much time on that particular component. Because we haven't made, we haven't made any real adjustments to any rates and fees, as founder said. Uh twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I know the last I went back and was researching after this. The last thing I see that came to council that had any rates was a twenty nineteen, so there hasn't been any significant changes except in the pool. Um last year we made some changes administratively because we switched programs into the. Life saving from the Red Cross and their. The programs didn't correspond, so I think the easiest thing, Mr. Mayor, if we take a few minutes. Um and Lori can bring it up on the screen too, so we go to the comparison sheet. I did highlight in yellow um the changes, so page one of the comparison sheets. Um we get there, Lori, you know, right there, so. Swimming pool, I highlighted the whole thing, even though there wasn't any changes, because. We did make some changes and you can see in twenty twenty two with the changing of the swim lessons, so. Um we're basically using the same rates at the swimming pool, recommending the same rate at the swimming pool. For twenty twenty three as we implemented in twenty twenty two. But we do have three new programs that we have the potential to offer with, based on some training that our pool manager has done. So we put in comparisons to other communities for those three, so that's the. Standard first aid, the National Lifeguard Pool and the Swim Instructor, so they're big dollars, but they're extensive courses, they're long. Uh courses, so. So that page, those were the only changes there. Next page at the pool rentals were very insignificant as far as I'm concerned. They were going up two or three dollars an hour across the board, so pretty. Pretty generic, just basically rounding them up to the nearest.
Three, five.
Um the seals, as Counselor Thurl said, they hadn't had an adjustment, so they they're going up six hundred dollars um. Proposed to up six hundred dollars. Um but again, I think they looked at it and said, we have forty swimmers and they're in the pool five days a week and. You know, whether we have to charge an extra five dollars a kid. Uh to cover that increase or ten dollars a kid, it's it's when you look at it that way. So at the arena, um for all of our. Wall signs, uh summer use concession, no changes, but there were some significant increases. To the adults and and youth, so uh so as you can see, regular adults. So they paid a hundred and thirty seven dollars an hour, it's going to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um tournaments, the only added tournament we have traditionally now is the cowboy tournament, so it's going from one fourteen to one twenty five. And then off hours use, which we don't have much of, will be one sixteen to one twenty. Minor hockey again would go from eighty six to a hundred and and figure skating from eighty six to a hundred. Off hours from seventy four to eighty five for both of them, so. That's one of the more significant ones, I think it was fifteen percent somewhere in that ballpark. But I don't think it's been touched for four to five years, so. And and when we looked at. Pretty much everybody was charging uh, other communities were charging a hundred dollars an hour, so. My own, so. So that's one we, that's one, if council does approve, we may get some feedback from. Our user groups, um and we'll listen to that feedback and take it under advisement, but. But those were were some some of the more significant changes there. Um. Turn to page six on the document, it's uh adult teams for minor ball went up seventy dollars. I think the rationalization around that was there's ten players on a team minimum. So that's seven dollars a person more to play ball over the summer. In today's world, that's not very much to. Beer at the bar at the end of the game. Um and and same with minor ball and soccer, they haven't been touched for a number of years, so they went up from twenty one hundred to twenty five hundred bucks. And they have a blanket fee, no matter how much they use, um. There's there's, that's the only charge they have, so some places will charge them for practice per game. But it's a real administrative headache, so so there's a change there. You turn forward, we can probably go quite a few pages to Centennial Place on page ten.
I was quite surprised, Mr. Neil, that the Fox Lake is, did not change the rates, there's. Those are the lowest rates I have ever seen for capra.
Wow, I don't think they're too far out.
No, they're pretty uh.
Yeah.
Uh we do a lot of travel, but they're pretty well, you know, looking at the template, you know, for. Well, it's pretty good, yeah.
Well, the other thing too, that's a little bit different, uh Council Murphy, I know when we talked to. Um for example, the wind guy said, we're here last year. So they come in, well, we're gonna be staying there for six months, do we get a month rent? A month big deal, no. You pay thirty six dollars a day for thirty days in that month. Um so we don't have, some of the other places will have a deal if you're there for two weeks or whatever, you'll get a. A discount, we don't offer any discounts, so. But when we go back to page ten, Centennial Place, there was some changes to the single admissions. So youth going up from two twenty five to three. Uh adult five fifty to six, senior four fifty to five, family eleven to fifteen. Then the punch cards would would match that, so for punch card, you basically get twelve admissions for the price of ten. Um the one that I questioned and I know rating works there. Um because I figured there might be some pushback is the drop in fee for the fitness center going from ten to fifteen dollars. Um. The, I think the board's rational around that, Council Thurl was. It might then push people to go into the punch card or then go into the. And they might catch the one time ones who are maybe, and this is maybe not kosher, but. Who are from out of town or here on a short term basis, not necessarily resident to wants to use it. Um so there was a a an increase there that. We may get some feedback on um. Then the field house down below there went up again fairly minor, forty five to fifty or seventy two to seventy five, so. Um if you're renting things for the day, like the youth family room for a hundred fifty four to a hundred eighty. And the, and uh so there was not significant there. The other thing we did add is. The swipe card replacement, so we have people who tend to lose their swipe cards. And they're, I think, close to ten bucks a card to, just to get the card, so. We put in a twenty five dollar lost or stolen um.
Yeah, return.
Pardon me?
Return.
Return, yeah. And we also, the only other change then, under the community services special needs van, we put in a new cancellation fee. Of twenty five dollars, there is some discretion there if it's bad weather or something's come up, but it will deter people from booking. The van.
It never is.
And then go, oh, I don't need it that day when someone else could have used it, so.
Do you run into that a lot?
Pardon me?
Do you run into that a lot?
Not a lot, but on occasion, we have some users that uh book it just to book it and and then, oh, I I'm sorry, I didn't need it that day, so. So those are the changes overall, um I don't know if there's any questions. Um between Counselor Thurl and myself, we do our best to answer, so.
But I guess my comments, I like almost all of it, the arena one really stands out to me um. I get all the way back up there. Uh I would prefer that to be kinda in line with everything else and just rounding it up for not weird sex. Um I mean, every community group, every service group has reduced enrollment, um less money kicking around. Uh I don't wanna be like every other community, uh you know, but we don't need to match them, like the idea that we're beating them. And I I think that would be more impactful, you know, those couple dollars an hour for. Many hundreds of hours.
The work we looked at too was the cost of everything has gone up significantly. The work we looked at too was the cost of everything has gone up significantly.
Yeah.
You know, and uh and this hasn't changed in.
Well, at least four years.
And uh and most of the board was sitting and looking at everything else. What? They have went up like ball is going up, everything else is going up. So to make it equal for everybody across the board, we tried to. You know, not just pick and choose. But we thought it would be even.
Scale though, or did you just like, I understand what Kyle said, you know. Um was there like, was there a scale, like a percentage, like you said, anywhere from ten to fifteen percent?
So so the group ones, so the SEALs. The Hannah Minor Ball, Minor Soccer and the Hannah Rink were were all, I think, within a. Percentage or two around the fifteen percent.
Yeah, and those are. It's a full season number, it's less than actual than, you know, fifteen.
Yeah.
And uh and we were looking at the numbers and. How many? Participants there is, you know, like uh it's lowest on the swimming compared to what? Minor hockey and all them, cause they pool it more or less.
So I mean, my thought, we've just gone through this, this is the. Or maybe fifth year, you'll know that we've had the same amount of tax base to operate the same size of town um. And are are managing it, even with, we know that all things getting more and we make cuts and still we see a number putting the circles. Um so I mean, I'm I'm comfortable managing that. And yeah, of course, increased fees a little bit, if nothing else to round it up and that puts a little bit in um. That's my thought, the arena one really stood out there, um and the other one, the fitness center drop in. Um I found it strange of that one, and I I understand your logic, you know, to pump the drop in fee more. Um but it wasn't applied to everything else, uh like the drop in, that I get, this is seventy five cents. You know, for you to go in for three dollars, it's worth it.
Yeah.
I I don't, I just don't like the logic of do more so that we either have.
We did, there was uh we looked at the accounting of it and we talked, uh really was a good one to explain because. You know, uh judgment numbers and stuff like this, and even money is e- uh better to work with than. The twenty five fifty cents, and uh we're just looking at it that way, that's why the other things weren't. You know, jacket two or three dollars, it was just less. Go up to the next round of number pretty well, so.
Well, I appreciate now I don't have to give my credit quarter.
No, there was, and it helps them make us um easier to do the finances even here, yet it's all. And uh.
I don't know, we talked about utilization of our facilities, and I realize we can't give them away, but I also don't want to start. Getting to the point where maybe we're getting out pricing people. Out of our facility.
And we're still, well. Lower than most of our.
I don't care what other people.
I know, but uh the whole thing is it's. We just looked at the stuff that hasn't been done in five, six years and uh. And this is the way it was.
I also don't want to discount, but I know you spent a two hour discussion on setting these fees.
Yeah.
So I don't want to discount your effort there.
You know, and uh.
I have a question then, are the are these incremental increases, like next year, are we looking at another increase then? Or this is gonna be stationary now for the next five years again, when we think we're not struggling ourselves with other communities?
I don't would never say that it's it's. It'll be the same, it'll be evaluated again next year, I would think, I would think the areas that got. Changes this year probably wouldn't. Be in in line to get uh necessarily changes next time, but I would never want to guarantee that. So I guess I guess there's a couple of options, A, council can approve the rates and fees as presented. Um council can, if someone wants to make an amendment to certain portions of them, they can be uh. Um amended, the other option too, which I'm not necessarily totally against is. Uh we could um table the rates and fees and ask the Community Services Board to. Look at or or we could approve all of them, if if there's a few that council wants to be reevaluated. Could go back to them to say, could you take a closer look at? These particular ones.
Mister Neil, I also had another um. So a couple citizens in the community have had to ask me about uh scheduling for the pool, and I don't know if this is the right time, but seeing as we're talking about it. If it will be consistent throughout the summer, because they said there were some inconsistencies last year with like the lane swim, all of a sudden. Near the end of the year, they didn't have enough staffing, so they they they.
We didn't change, we didn't change anything, the only thing we did once. Uh once our lesson program was done, which is around the middle of August, so once our lessons are done. And and seals are done, we don't open the pool until the. So we don't have, we don't bring staff in for the morning. Uh lane swim, we don't open till one because there's nothing that would fill between.
September?
No, it it probably hits around the middle of August. Once we finish, once we finish all rounds of swim lessons, we're not offering anymore. So we're not typically lessons would start at nine in the morning. And when we're not offering lessons, we just said it makes no sense to bring staff in to work for an hour and a half for. Six people who want to lane swim at six at seven in the morning, so they can still come and lane swim at twelve noon. They can still come and lane swim in evening, but they lost their morning lane swim, this could be what they're.
The morning lanes when they said.
Yeah. It was it was canceled, it was basically canceled the last two weeks in August.
Yeah, that that is a complaint I heard as well, is that they they preferred the morning, um because they weren't available in the other options. And would prefer the morning.
Was there a change for just like opening time outside of those couple weeks?
We changed uh again last two, about two or three years ago, we changed from a. Six thirty start to seven start.
Okay, cause I've certainly heard about that from, again, there's, it's considered a small group, but it is a group that.
I've been told to.
It's just with the morning one going from six thirty seven, it just made this the shifts. It better to fit in the whole day, um because they have to come before. The seven o'clock start, they gotta be there before seven, so at six thirty start, there might be. Two or three people that come between six thirty and seven, so. But I know we've heard that concern as well.
Lori, were you mentioning this about the entire facility, six fifty one point? And twenty cents?
Yes, why not just? Wanted to ask uh Mister Neil a question about the facility rate. On the community center, the entire facility between two nineteen and twenty twenty three, it decreased. Or is that a error?
Um I'd have to double check. That could be me. That could be me, it could be the other way around.
Yeah, uh yeah, it was.
I'd I'd have to double check that one.
I think I would like to the the groups that had the highest. Increase, I think I would like them to see about reconsidering, if they're at twenty percent. I would like to see them look.
I don't think we have any at twenty.
Well, the fitness center went from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty. Wow, that's not.
That's on the punch.
That's a lot, that's that's that fifty percent increase, right? As well as the drop in fee, so. I know we're talking about the big groups, but we're also affecting individuals. Potentially right out of even being able to use the fitness facility. I know it's to encourage them to get a punch card.
You don't wanna severely undercut the private enterprise ones either, I'm I'm sure. That is taken into account.
What if we looked at like ten percent and then rounded everything to be a number like on the upside?
The nearest five.
I would rather five.
Nearest minute.
Fifteen percent, anything, I think fifteen percent and above is. Is a too high an increase. Flat out, and I know everything is increasing and everything, but. None of the facilities, you know, if we get more people to use the facilities, that we can get more money generated that way instead of. Picking at people that are using it, that would be my preference, but. How do you do that? How do you get more and more people to come use your facilities?
It's a little bit unique in the fact like at the golf course, for example, in Council also, and I've had this discussion before. The the cost of the golf course is the same if there's one golfer or there's fifty golfers, where in an arena. Um it's almost the same, we don't generate any more revenue by having more people using, but I mean, I don't know that we want to. Drive people out of there either, because pretty soon these numbers cost prohibitive, and the pool, I don't. I I speak in the arena because I've had kids in the arena, I at the pool, I've never had. That's my goal, I guess, is to, I mean. We've all, we all know recreation doesn't pay for itself, I mean, that's probably the worst kept secret. I mean, we know recreation is a is a is a lost leader, whatever you want to call it, but I I know, I just, I I struggle. To. I struggle to increase these fees as much as we are when people are struggling financially, like I mean. Um we've had two um. Uh grocery grabs in the last week and a half. Uh where people come in with a backpack, fill a backpack, a duck out of the store, one of them was in well, two different stores in town. Um that's becoming.
Yeah.
That's too much. Uh and I'm not saying what we're doing has any effect on that, but I'm just saying that. Uh for the first time since I remember, we have multiple homeless people in town um. We just, I I know, I know what I I understand, Counselor Thurl, I understand, Mister Neil. I just, I don't want to be that that guy, I just.
Like even if we are to.
I think ten percent.
Yeah, I think or incrementally, like say we do our ten percent this year, which seems probably fair and reasonable.
It's just seventeen or seventeen or half percent is a lot of money to spend, so.
Oh, it is, you know, we're just asked. I know, but the the whole thing is, we were just looking at, you know, especially these ones, you know, the twenty five cents.
So let's narrow, let's.
Round to a near five, near. Comfortable number with a maximum ten percent. If it's ten percent, then I have to round down.
So can we narrow it down to just specific areas?
So I would say, so the arena is the one that stands out.
So the arena and the the arena, what stands out to me?
So bring the arena screen up and I can.
Like that, it it's not just the arena.
So nothing else goes up ten, well, I guess the full season was those ones when it's four hundred bucks for a full season of use.
Yeah, it's uh, oh, what we looked at and uh. A lady there that runs this, you know, she's one. And she looked at it, you know, because take a look at swim compared to everybody else in town, like they're paying and having the same. Seasons, you know, at swim club, you know, they're paying five thousand, but she had no problem with, you know, it's the. The other ten, twelve, cause there's ten or twelve teams.
So like.
Rates are reviewed every one to two years, so if you consider that every review has been skipped because of.
My quick and dirty of the arenas. With start the highlighted is one forty, one fifteen, one twenty, one sixty. Ninety, seventy five, one twenty five, ninety, seventy five, one twenty five.
But I I I personally don't want to just look at the arena. Swimming and.
Um but assuming was that there was really the only swimming one that was changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then. The um.
Facility rental.
The facilities and.
Oh, yeah, and the fitness drop in.
Yeah, like pool rates, they already went up three dollars and twenty cents, so that wasn't even.
Those ones are almost as all rounding as.
Yeah, that was what we did there was.
For example, right, just that's.
Well, skating.
Seems a lot to go up thirteen dollars an hour, an hour.
Well, uh we're we're moving nowhere, I would happily make a motion. With those numbers listed off, if I can go through them again. I think looking at everything, it's. I'm good with all of it. Except the arena. Hourly rental and the fitness drop in.
So what 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 numbers do you have, Cole, once, also one thirty seven to one forty?
Yep.
And then one fourteen to one. One fifteen?
Yeah.
And then one sixteen.
To one twenty.
So that stays?
Yeah.
And then uh eight six to ninety?
Yeah, ninety seventy five, and then one twenty five.
Okay, and then be the same down below. And then what are your thoughts on Centennial Place?
Just a drop in from ten to twelve instead of ten to fifteen. And then, of course, a punch pass accordingly.
So. Um. Ten to twelve. For adult.
Yeah, right there.
And then that one twenty to with the one hundred to one twenty.
Yeah. And even the. The family. For the single admission. From eleven dollars.
I I think they've matched that, it's the same at the pool.
Okay.
And I think is some rationale for that, so.
So did you adjust the family punch card? From one ten?
From one ten to one fifty?
Yeah, and that's just. But that's just to match the draw, the single use.
Yeah.
Ten times.
Yeah. So does that, does that?
Those would be my.
I like that.
I am, I'd like to see the the seals reduced. Even though they say that they're good with that, well, maybe not everybody is.
So just when you, when you think about the numbers, that's fifteen dollars a swim.
Fifteen dollars more?
Fifty dollars more per swimmer.
And make it full time every season.
Well, I think it's nice to look at considering everybody here, reducing the. I know everybody is hockey, but not everybody is. I think it's nice to consider the regular ones as well.
So let's.
Numbers that I beautifully.
On the floor to address those specific areas, so you need to vote on the amendments.
Take a look at her of the amended motion.
Everybody understands that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fred, Sam, did you?
That's why I asked for a vote.
I'd like to see it go ten percent, but. Even across the board.
Well, we've got a motion that's passed.
So those those numbers will be adjusted uh as per the amendment. And if there's any other um adjustments anyone wants to make, they can put them on the on the table, the same as uh Counselor Olson did.
Ju- just out of curiosity, uh Mister Neil, the um SEAL Swim Club, do they have? Oh, I'm sorry. Do do they have a lifeguard on specifically for their club?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that the variables there are a little bit different then.
Just, I don't know, we have.
Counselor, would you like to make a motion in regards to the SEALs pro- program?
Well, I wouldn't mind seeing it, say. Even if it was forty seven fifty. I think. Done yet, I have. Some others I'm looking at. Can we just, can we table this and then come back with? With our suggestions? I guess maybe we should have done that one regarding.
Yeah, those facilities openings. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we've got one motion that's been passed, so if you want to table, like you can bring this at any time, I was just thinking with you, I have one that you wanted. Address, so we can, yeah, it can be brought up at any time.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I I guess the comment that I will make is um swimming is starting in. A month.
Year and month, yeah.
Six weeks and um.
There's still lots of snow in the pool, I looked today.
I know, but hoping the pool's opening in six, a month to six weeks, so.
They're gonna set their fees, Bernie, you guys had some conversation with the SEALs Club, didn't you?
Bernie, you guys had some conversation with this SEALs club, didn't you, in regards to the increase?
What's her name? Is on the executive, she was texted while we're.
And she's the chair of the.
And and she and she advised that this was affordable for their club, right?
It's huge one that brought up the number for it. Few people.
So that one seems, yeah.
Nobody wants to pay more? I had, you know, I had the same concerns council also did. Um, the exact same ones, the others I think are, nobody likes to see an increase, but I think the others are. Manageable and and doable, um. Across the board, so, but if council wishes to make any amendments, now's the opportunity, so.
All right, I'll just stay out of there.
So then, if there's no further discussion, Mister Mayor, I think then you basically call. The question to approve the policy, um, basically as effective as amended.
So can we get a motion? What Mister Neil said.
Well, yeah, it's a big cast policy, point twenty twenty three oh one. When you service the department fees and charges to establish fees and charges for facilities, programs and services. As amended, effective May first.
Vincent council also, all in favor? Closed. We can, anyone want to add or point out?
That's a quick point to whatever golf course meeting, we pointed out that. A year ago, we had tarps removed and put away and. It's not the same this year.
The moisture's a welcome.
Yeah, and our, uh, our, Kevin said the same feedback about runoff as Brent, that it's. The freezing crystallized and nothing would be, just as you said, it's he's noticing almost nothing. Coming, which is amazing, you see all that piles of snow and it's just.
Dry in places already, yeah, I mean, that's the most snow I've ever had piled in my yard at the shop ever, by far.
A lot of those early snowfalls though had had terrible moisture.
But I'm just saying, like, that's the most.
Yeah, with the amount of snow, I doubt we'd have. People running over the road again, and only the last one snowfall that had any piece of moisture.
Yeah, they've had a shop for ten years, and like I said, that's the most snow I've ever piled in my ever bike car. I had to get Terry's a little over there, I'll be open two or three times, so.
You get a little boost of wind.
And two warm days.
And it's gone, and it's.
Anything else you'd like to add to your reports?
Of course. Sorry. I received this uh letter this morning that I'd like to share. Um, it says to say the. To say that that hospital auxiliary is feeling disrespected is an understatement. The organization has done so much good work in the community, serving everyone in the community for over eighty years. For many of the members, the request to change what has been a community staple for countless years is enough to say they are done. If we go to one sale per year, the spring sale, we will lose half of our annual income. We cannot afford that, medical equipment is being prohibitively expensive. And H S is funding less than it once was, especially in small rural hospitals. In these times of shortages of medical staff, doctors and the many support staff that are vital to patient care. It is doubly important to be able to keep our medical facilities well equipped. If we want to attract and retain doctors, nurses, physiotherapists, lab and X-ray techs, et cetera. There is no end to the methods used to attract staff, and we are not only. Competing with the rest of the province, but the entire country. Facilities with modern equipment are a good way to show community support for these facilities. This is where the Hannah auxiliary and rummage sales come into play. Without these sales, we will not be able to equip and maintain our hospital, physio departments and long term care. To the standard we now enjoy. If we have to rely on H S, you can be assured that there would be a deterioration in the equipment. And maintenance of facilities and care provided for those needing medical treatment and advanced care. The entire community would suffer. Our medical facilities are there to serve all of the members of our community, from the very young, our children that some. Say they are looking out for, to the very old and frail. At many stages of all of our lives, we will need to access these facilities and services. How sad if they are not not here when you need them. This has become a reality in many small towns, it can influence whether or not people choose to live here, to come here or to stay. I realize that the aim of council is not to cancel the fall sale, but to move it. However, moving the sale could have that effect. It is enough to cause many in the auxiliary to throw in the towel. Like all volunteer organizations, the auxiliary struggles to find members and volunteers. They are vital, as are those that donate items to the sale. And the many that come to take advantage of the selection and savings in all departments and contribute by purchasing. People from communities near and far come to Hannah to support the auxiliary through their attendance at the sales, I can assure you. The dates are already marked on their calendars because these dates have been relied on for so many years. It has been suggested that the end of August might be a good sale date. I can tell you from the point of view of someone that has lived, worked and volunteered in the community for over thirty years, that August will not work. At that time, people are working in their yards, farmers, farmers are still in the field, families are busy getting. That last camping trip in and getting ready for back to school. With shopping trips to the city for new clothes and school supplies. And those without children in school are going on vacation to take advantage of shoulder season. No one has the time to think of decluttering to find items to donate, the last thing on their minds is a rummage sale. Donating items, volunteering or shopping. For a town taxpayers, oh, sorry, for the town taxpayers, they stand to lose. The rental income from auxiliary plus there is added cost to get the ice in for an extra week for a few players. Does does minor hockey help with that, or is that on the taxpayers? Has Hannah, has minor hockey executive asked their members if they feel the change is warranted? The job of council is to look after what is best for the majority of the community citizens. In this key, in this case, they need to ask themselves, how many citizens will benefit from their decision? A select few or an entire community? Thanks for taking the time to read my perspective on this sticky situation, I feel that if council votes in favor of hockey. That this issue will not go away, our rummage sale might go away, a sad day for the community. And then that, that just an email, and also, as a reminder, in a course I've taken and in some of our instructions. As our duties as counselors. Um, counselors have the following duties to consider the welfare and interests of the of the municipality as a whole. And to bring to councils' attention anything that would promote the welfare or interest of the municipality. That's all I wanted to add.
Do we have a signee?
We do, and it's anonymous, I've said I would not, but if you wish to ask questions, it would. Also have an update, the H S, um, Orient Big Country Hospital have, um, opened their. Um, they're pleased to share that they have secured onsite agency nurses effective April seventh. Big Country Emergency Department. Um, and five of the ten acute care beds will return to twenty four hour service. And they're just saying that they're grateful to the, all the people that worked to make that happen. So that has an impact on our community as well, that, um. Um, Hannah was another community that anybody in need after the hours were removed, that they could come to Hannah, so. That may take a little bit off our people, I'm not sure how much they had. That's all I say.
Anything else? Motion to accept council report for information. Force moments.
I don't think there was anything. Shattering, um, you know, I think it's interesting. Um, you know, the province funding rail exploration in B C to Alberta, so. That's has some positives potentially, but, uh. I'll see how that process goes, but other than that, I don't think David had talked about the fire service training grant, so I don't know if there's anything. Else there, Mister Mayor?
Close session.
Nope.